Consent agenda, and we'll go ahead and start with that. If there's any of these items that the council would like to pull off and discuss.
I would, Mr. Mayor, please. If we could pull item number four. And number five, I've just got a quick question, but anyway, those two items, please.
And number two, I have a quick question.
Number two. All right, that leaves two remaining. Do we have a motion to approve?
And public comment.
Yes.
I'll sponsor those to go through.
Okay. Is there public comment on these, as Wayne suggested? See, this kind of confuses me, because we're really not... No, that's fine. It's just a minute.
We have to get it.
Before you take action.
All right, without public comment, is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now talking about item two.
I just had a question. If you read the first paragraph, it talks about, as the sponsor of the Pirates of the Treasure Coast event called Pirate Fest, the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce has received approval from the city's recreation partner for the use of Riverside Park and Royal Palm Point, and above dates is now seeking to serve alcoholic beverages at the event. When you read down in it, it looks like they only want to serve alcoholic beverages in Riverside Park. That's my only question. Is that so or not so?
What is the question again?
Well, when you read their cover letter, it looks like they want to serve alcohol in both Royal Palm Point and Riverside Park, but when you read the form that they filled in, it only talks about Riverside Park.
Rob Sleazak, Recreation Director. They only sold alcohol at Riverside Park last year. I'm thinking it'll be the same. If it's anything different, we would...
This is Mr. McCabe.
Oh, period. I'm going to let him talk.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. Sorry to be late.
Not at all.
I guess the question, just coming in the door, is... I'm Bob McCabe, I'm sorry, 4049 Ocean Drive, Vice President of the Vero Beach Chamber of Commerce. And when we filled out that application just about a year ago, right after the last one, the thought was that we would only need Riverside Park, and what we are asking now is the flexibility of using both Royal Palm Point and Riverside Park. We're expecting, in meeting with our Pirates of the Treasure Coast folks, they think we could get up to 20,000 people this year, and we just would like to have that flexibility of using both locations.
Okay.
The question was regarding mountain ball.
Yeah, the question was, is it served...
Are you looking at Royal Palm, Matty, or just Riverside?
We'd like to do both, yes.
Okay. So you'd like to just amend the application to include Royal Palm?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And I met with Ms. Volk and just asked how best to handle that, and she said just to submit the letter the way it was and so forth. If you want me to go back through Recreation Department for Royal Palm.
No, I think as long as it's clear for council, I think, Mr. McKay, that was the issue that we were...
I'll make a motion to approve it then.
I'll second.
Well, simple one. Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry to be late.
Not at all. Okay, item number four.
Okay, this item, this is regarding, I guess, additional construction services for the RO system?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
I guess I found the backup very, very weak. What is the schedule? Why are we adding this? What's the total cost? The analysis that's presented is for the whole project. It's nothing, you know, it doesn't address this additional need for construction services.
Well, actually, you've awarded the bid, and in that bid process, and in the process of going out for bids, we explained that, that this element could not be in... If you recall, you came back in, you awarded the bids, and then this element was left out of the original request for proposals, because we wanted to see the scope and the size of what the contract was going to be. And so this comes from the designer of the project, and so we thought that they were the most qualified to oversee the construction. But that was left out of the original bid, even though there was money budgeted in there for that process, to have the construction manager hired. And so this is still within the scope and within the budget of the thing, but the timing... Okay, back when Reese Engineering was hired, was in '14, we talked about the RO skid modifications, the skid additions, the high-pressure pumps, the chemical feeds, and I do not see... I do not have the timing as to when, but it's ready to start now, because we've already awarded the bids.
So this $125,000 represents how many, you know, construction service hours? Do we have any?
The scope of the construction service is attached. It tells you what their scopes would be, the expansion of the RO, and this is the scope of services, and it's one of 10 pages. It tells you what we... what the expectations are of the contractor. And then on the last page, it talks about, it breaks down, the Reese Engineering services on the back page, the amended as to what it would be.
Did I miss the man-hour estimate? No. I guess it just, they gave us just total fees, not man-hours per se.
That's correct. Gave us total cost to fulfill the...
In future, I would like to see that SWOT analysis address specifically what we're being asked to approve. I mean, it's not the overall project we're approving right here. We're just looking at that construction services.
Well, actually, you're approving the scope of services as amended here, which is your last 10 pages, I guess.
It's actually page 14 is where the number comes from, for what that's worth. I'm not... no further comment.
With that, I move for approval.
Okay, you second?
I'll second.
Any comment?
Does the public want to weigh in on this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We are at number five.
And number five, reviewing the cover memo, it's just clarifying maintenance, cost sharing, and ownership with Fort Pierce regarding our tie line.
Yes, this is the 138 tie line, and it's the piece of line that's been in place for years, and it used to be when we ran our plant and they ran their plant back and forth, but there was never a description of whose maintenance responsibility, what sections were. So this is to clarify that and put it out as to clarification of those... We've been doing this work, we just have not had it in the contractual form.
How did this come to light now?
A couple things. Number one is our 138 line's starting to cost us money, and the issue of do we need the 138, and if we do, then how do we change that? It also brings us into the more federal regulations, the more the 138 and the tie line you have. This is going to help us alleviate some of that problem. The other is, is we've been talking to Florida Power and Light about our 138 system, as well as Fort Pierce, and seeing if there's something that we can do to work with Florida Power and Light on the 138 system, and sort of reduce our exposure there. So you needed to have a definite as to who was responsible for what.
Yeah, a clear scope of work, yeah.
And so we've been meeting with Fort Pierce on this.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there any public make comment on this?
If not, I just want to make a comment real quick. We've got to get this thing signed today and down to Fort Pierce for their meeting.
That is correct, yes, sir.
What time do we got to do that?
Do you know what time their Fort Pierce meeting is, Ted?
It's Thursday, but I need to have it by 4:00 today.
To get it on their agenda, by 4:00 today, to get it...
You need to have it there at 4:00. We need to be, have it signed and out of here by 4:00.
Okay.
Which I pray that we can do that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Onto public hearings with the resolution for 5A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, related to ordinance number 520, adopted by the Town of Indian River Shores, Florida, attempting to regulate electric utilities providing service within the town, initiating governmental conflict resolution procedures with the Town of Indian River Shores regarding said ordinance pursuant to the Governmental Conflict Resolution Act, Chapter 164 Florida statutes, providing for an effective date, requested by attorneys Chef Wright and John Frost.
Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens. Glad to be back, as always. I think that the resolution and the proposed cover letter are self-explanatory. Briefly, the facts are that the Town of Indian River Shores adopted an ordinance last September by which they expressed an intent to regulate the rates and service of the City of Vero Beach's electric service in Indian River Shores. We've analyzed this. We don't believe that much, if any, of it, frankly, don't think any of it is lawful. We think it's preempted by various, by provisions of the Florida PSC's regulatory statute, and also inconsistent with both federal, United States Supreme Court, and state of Florida law, as it relates to some of the items. I don't know exactly what form a conflict would take, but down the road, say, November 7th, if they were to attempt to regulate our rates, something would happen that would have some form of legal proceedings, and we think that the reasonable, prudent, efficient thing to do is to initiate the conflict resolution process pursuant to Chapter 164 at this time. That's what this resolution would do. You have to do this by a resolution. You formally have to initiate the conflict resolution procedures by resolution, and you have to transmit the resolution to the Chief Administrative Officer of the municipal government entity with which you have a conflict. So that's what this would do.
Okay, so we'll get thrown back into the conflict resolution meetings, as we did before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a quick question. I mean, in my mind, does this speed up the process to getting to a resolution to a lot of our issues?
It would expedite the process related to any dispute as regarding the implementation of this ordinance. That's all it would do. It does not address the other issues that we have pending with the town.
And outcome of this would be a kind of a legal reaction? I mean, in terms of a suit or anything like that? I mean, is this, is this just to sit down, just to say, hey, look, let's sit down and resolve this?
This is, this is just to sit down, and that's all this is.
Yeah, yeah.
This is just to sit down, as I, excuse me, as I said, I can see a conflict coming.
Yeah.
I don't know what form it would take.
Right.
And what I'm trying to do is, what we're trying to do, is ideally head it off in its entirety. If not, maybe we can reduce the scope of it, and if not, worst case, we've at least gone through the 164 process, which expedites the resolution of the conflict otherwise.
So we have a franchise agreement in place now that expires in November, and so we're saying, when it expires, let's talk about your reaction, our reaction, when it expires, so that we don't have a conflict, so that we avoid...
Not exactly. Their ordinance provides by its terms that they would assert regulatory jurisdiction over our rates and service effective the day after the franchise expires. That's the relation to the franchise, Councilmember Holt.
So I understand, this resolution is only to address that ordinance, the 520 ordinance of Indian River Shores. First of all, I want to apologize to council. I have left some information for you. I realize I've just put it on the dais today, and you certainly didn't expect you to have a chance to review it. I have, in the past two weeks, been in the emergency room four times with a family member, and they're still in ICU, so I apologize, I wasn't more timely in getting this data to you. But I want, I want to go over, just do a little review of what we've been with Indian River Shores. The first item I left for you, it was a summary of the meeting of January 27th that Mr. Wright, Mr. Harrington had with Indian River Shores. This data came from Indian River Shores' website. I'd like to note that there is nothing on Vero Beaches. We received no summary whatsoever of that meeting. That was to discuss the price for Indian River Shores' portion of Vero Electric. The next document that I left for you was presented as Vero Beach's substantiation for our $64.5 million price tag. This is the first I have ever seen of it, and I obtained it from Indian River Shores, because it was never provided to council, never provided to the Finance Commission, Utilities Commission for review or buy-in. So I'm wondering, who's establishing this? And, you know, the city council, are we not directing what we want to do with our assets? If you take this sheet and you just do a cursory look at it, you'll see that they've taken, that when you sell part of our utility, that we would have a natural reduction in fixed costs and in variable costs associated with that portion of the utility. And this analysis adds those costs to the price of Indian River Shores, as opposed to saying, hey, this is a savings to the City of Vero Beach. And those costs amount to close to $30 million. Just so you'll kind of see how far apart we are with some of this analysis. This last, the last document I gave you is a summary of Winter Park, when they were negotiating, or they were in mediation, arbitration, make sure I use the right words, an arbitration with FPL to purchase back their utility. Because I wanted you to kind of see what kinds of things can happen in arbitration. And the key thing there was, you know, stranded costs were determined on a 10-year basis, as opposed to what we're contending here is 30, and their cost approach. But, I mean, it's an involved thing, and I said, it's just really for background. That being said, where are we? You know, we've spent a year in mediation meetings. I've attended these mediation meetings with Indian River Shores, and I found them confrontational. I found the city stonewalling it. We've taken a take-it-or-leave-it attitude. Next has come litigation, and we've had several lawsuits filed. We've made requests for a barrage of documents, also met with from Indian River Shores as well. All it's done is created more acrimony in this community. We've accomplished nothing. The lawyers are continuing to rack up fees while Vero Beach ratepayers and Indian Shore residents pay. It's time to stop this insanity. We need to take back control of this issue and restore some harmony. We're getting closer every day to a possible judgment on one of these lawsuits. If Vero loses, a court-mandated sell-off would certainly leave us in a weaker position in negotiating versus a voluntary sale. Now is the time to work a deal. I offer this council a no-cost, no-risk option. I repeat that, no costs and no risk. Before we commit to any more government mediation, more illegal fees, let's try some common sense. I make a motion to set up a meeting with the mayors and city managers of Vero Beach, Indian River Shores, along with FPL, to discuss a view, to negotiate, discuss, negotiation meaning to discuss with a view to finding terms of agreement for a sale of Vero Electric's portion service in Indian River Shores to FPL, and to report back to the respective councils for action.
I'll second that.
Okay. You said an awful lot of interesting things. I mean, the confrontations that we've had has pretty much been the shores beating up Vero Beach.
We've spent 100% the shores beating Vero Beach, let's be honest.
Pretty much. I mean, 100%. You read what they put in the paper, it's, we're always bad. I don't think we've attacked Indian River Shores. We've been very congenial to them. Those numbers that you pointed out, we asked. They asked us to bring forward those numbers. We did that. And then we were punished profusely for bringing forth those numbers. That would numbers, those numbers came from a meeting here. They wanted to know what it would take. And we, we asked them. We asked you guys. We asked Chef to do that.
Yeah, but the council certainly had not reviewed these numbers. This has never been a part, a city discussion.
It's still in review. We're waiting for numbers from FMPA.
I think it's time we listen to council, Mr. Mayor. It's okay with you.
That's fine.
You do have a motion, a second on the floor.
Yeah, this is all in the interest of transparency.
It is.
I have nothing against her motion.
Well, that's, that's her right. Mr. Wright?
In terms of where we are, in the less formal status, we met with the Indian River Shores folks on January 27th. We agreed in that meeting that we would take another look on a different methodological basis that Mr. Deason and I discussed in that meeting, and Mr. Harrington, and to look at a 30-year revenue requirements analysis, or longer, depending on how you want to look at it. It's a matter of judgment. But we agreed we would take a look at it on a revenue requirements basis. We, I am told, you know, and you can say what you want to say about it, but I expect to receive updated, long-term power supply cost estimates, projections from FMPA within the next few days. Those numbers need to go into this analysis. The numbers that are in there are dated, and they will change. That's where that part of it stands. In terms of the proceedings, briefly, I can talk about the history, but I don't need to. I'm happy to, but don't need to. In terms of the history, in terms of where we are, the town has filed a motion, a petition to modify the PSC's territorial order at the PSC. We filed a motion to dismiss. Naturally, as your attorneys, we believe that our motion to dismiss is well-founded and well-taken. We wouldn't have filed it otherwise. They have till Thursday of this week to respond, and we'll see what the PSC does with it after that. In the lawsuit, we are in discovery, and we are awaiting some discovery responses from the town. That is, that is where things stand.
Meanwhile, if there is a judgment that undermines our negotiating abilities, that's, as opposed to having all the players sit down at the table and possibly coming up with a solution, I don't, I don't see what's wrong with that.
I certainly don't have a problem sitting down with the players, and I have been doing that. However, just flat-out saying that you need to sell the darn thing at whatever cost and say that we're at a weak position, we are not in a weak position.
No, I think we could certainly get a win. We could, well, that's your opinion, if you want to bet on lawsuits.
I don't think we're in a weak position today. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying...
I agree with you.
You're at least a year away from any court ruling, not the Supreme Court. I don't know when they're going to rule on the PSC stuff, but...
Mr. Frost, can I get you to use a microphone, please?
John Frost, as to the litigation issue, you're at least a year away before any judge is going to do anything, because it's in the discovery stages right now, and we're waiting for stuff from Indian River Shores that they owe us in discovery. We have given them our stuff, so we're waiting for that. I just, and I think the mayor is correct, we're the defendant in all these lawsuits. We didn't file any lawsuits. We haven't filed any lawsuits that we're defending the lawsuit brought by Indian River Shores here in this county, and they brought it. We moved to dismiss. We were successful on most of their complaint. And so that's sitting there, but that complaint is probably more than a year away, because we're just in the discovery stages.
I was just going to say, I mean, we're, we know that Indian River Shores is not going to lose their resolve. I mean, they have said over and over, as recently as last Monday, they had a town hall meeting and was still reiterating, that they are going to continue to fight.
Well, that's...
You know, for them, it's a $2 million, you know, variance in electric, annual saving in electric rate, that they want their whole community to be under FPL. I mean, this is our, this is our community. We're all part of Indian River County, you know? Why can't we at least sit down as businesspeople and try to come up with a solution, and come up with a creative way, for it's a win-win for everyone? And that's what I'm asking.
We are. I mean, I've been talking to Brian Barefoot. I've, you know, we are.
I do want to add, I don't think the city is in a weak position at all, but, but importantly for this meeting, and I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, I'm for transparency. I'm for talking, and that's great. And if there's something to be done, that's great. That's how the world is supposed to work, but I don't, and if you want to meet tomorrow, that's fine, too. But until we have the updated numbers, which will go into calculating what we have been charged to do, we, your analytical team, PRMG, Mr. Harrington, Mr. Warren, myself, what we've been charged to do is come up with a keep-hold number for the city and all the rest of our customers. That is what it would take to keep everybody hold.
Right.
And I don't have the last bit of information, we don't have the last bit of information. I do expect to receive it this week, per a conversation I had with Mr. Finkley last Wednesday. You know, I, I will aver to you, I have been diligent. It's just taken them a while to put it together. I mean, these are 20-year projections that they're putting together, and they want to make sure that they're thoroughly vetted before they give them to us. That's where things stand.
You know, one thing, just, just an asterisk, they, at the end of this last month, they will have spent about $880,000. So it certainly proves they have a lot of resolve. They may go to a million or two or three before they're through. And we've, we spent about $290,000. We've got better lawyers than they do, but be that as it may. So, I mean, they're certainly willing to spend unlimited amounts of their taxpayers' money, and they've lost all, everything I've seen so far. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Mr. Wright, as far as money spent, I think if you include about the $100,000 for Mr. Frost, and there are several other items that are dealing with the Indian River Shores on that list, it comes up to the city spent around $550,000. Our Vero ratepayers have spent about $550,000 on that.
I don't agree with that, but okay.
I've got $290,000 for, for us on the two matters involving the shores, the lawsuit, including the mediation, and the recent jurisdictional petition for declaratory statement. There will be a significant amount added to that for work that I did, we did in March, on moving to dismiss their latest petition to the Florida Public Service Commission. But that, that's really all on the shores.
We're still, we're still are not, you know, getting any closer to resolving the issue, and we're continuing to expend money on attorneys. We have a motion on the floor. I'd like to call the motion.
I, one, I'm, what my understanding is, is the, the number that has to be small enough so that Florida Power and Light can actually take it on, is something that's much smaller than what we have to get in order to satisfy our ratepayers. And that maybe it's $60 million on our side, maybe it's $40 million, whatever, but it'll never get close to the 13 or 14, or whatever the number is, to satisfy Florida Power and Light.
I don't know, we know that.
Yeah. We don't. We get all three parties in a room.
We actually, we actually do know that, as a matter of fact. We do that.
If you've gotten all three parties in a room to resolve that, all we're asking, like I said, this is a no-cost, no-risk option.
Well, you know, for what it's worth, what this does...
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, this is what this does. We go into conflict resolution, and we'll get all the parties in the room. I understand it's on a different...
They're two separate issues.
They're separate issues, but we can just join them together and adjourn, go into another one while we're still in the same room.
And that's government-mandated arbitration. It's different.
Because this, this really is going to affect what happens on November 7th. So this needs to be passed. Now we need to talk about this, and that's all this resolution does, is get the people together, talk about this part of it. And you can have your meeting together on the other, and you can include this, it doesn't matter. But I think this is a separate issue that you need to act now, because November 7th is just around the corner.
Mr. Mayor, this, this comment, if the $64 million were correct, and Chef is saying it's going to be modified, the consequence for the next 20 years would be we'd have to raise the rates of all of the non-Indian River Shore people. It's just straight math, I mean...
Well, it is.
3% or thereabouts.
The shores gets the benefits, everybody else pays.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I'm sure there's probably members of the public that'd like to speak on this matter.
Yeah.
All right. Still don't know where $64 million came from. Ask. Ask.
Should I wait?
No, go ahead.
Please do.
I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Because I can wait?
No, sir, you're fine.
Okay. For the record, Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. I'd like to just remind you all, all of you that sit up there, are, your, one of your main duties is to the residents of this community, our city, and you guys are in charge. You're in charge of all our utility dealings, how the money comes in, how the rates are set. It's in your, your seat. I would ask, whatever you all do as a group... I would ask, whatever you all do as a group, you look out for us and the city, and if you decide to do whatever Indian River Shores wants you to do, because they apply a lot of political pressure, they apply a lot of money to what they want, be that as it may, you still are responsible to the city of Vero Beach, its residents, you take an oath to that. That's why you're there. My point is this, you need to look out for us. Do not put the burden on us where you, let's say, do what Indian River Shores would like. It comes right back to us, we'll, we'll incur the extra costs. Not only us within side the city limits, also the other ratepayers. And I'll tell you right now, other ratepayers out throughout the county and even in the city, you start adding extra monies to their bill, they can't afford it. The folks in Indian River Shores, you know, they got their reasons for doing what they're doing. But I tell you what, they're not in the soup line, okay? So whatever you do, please look out for your residents, the other ratepayers here, listen to your experts. You're the ones that choose your attorneys and your experts and whatnot. Before you okay anything as far as giving in, or whatever you want to call it, look at your numbers first. You have to look at the long term. With our obligations with FMPA, it's the life of the plants. As long as they're in existence, we have dollars that we have to pay those contracts. Those contracts were signed many years ago. A lot of us don't like them, they are what they are. So you need to look at that. Life of a plant, you can keep repairing a plant, they can go on indefinitely. Yes, they have a shelf life of usually 35 years. The Nuke that we're part of in St. Lucie County, that has a shelf life, but there's no rules against repairing plants, Stanton 1 and 2, no rules about repairing that. Maybe they'll put them on, on the shelf sooner or later, we don't know that. But going forward, the city of Vero Beach, your ratepayers, us, the taxpayers, the bonds that were signed many years ago, we're under hook for that. If you make a whoops as a city council because your backs, your backs get thrown up on the wall because of the political pressure, your constituents, they will shoulder the burden. And we, please remember that. You took an oath to watch out for us, and I know going forward, it's an election year, there's a lot of pressure that will be on some of you. But you got to think of your oath. Think of that first. If it means meeting together in a room somewhere, be, fine, whatever, but make sure you have your proper consultants there, your attorneys there. You got to remember now, Indian River Shores, they're going to do everything they possibly can for their people, period. You need to do what's good for your people. FPL, that is a, a company that works on profits, so much to their shareholders, and then they work to keep their costs down. They're beholden to their shareholders and their customers. They are not going to do anything, pay Vero Beach whatever for their system if it's going to impact their, their, their client base. It's as simple as that. They told you, they told us that, and I can't blame them for that. They're going to protect their people, what I call their people, shareholders and ratepayers. You, I would ask you, please, do the same for your residents, your ratepayers, because you got to look over this way a little bit, over what we call the west side of the tracks a tad. That's all I'm asking you to do, not telling you what to do, just remember us, because this, this has gotten complicated, and Mrs. Turner's right. It has cost a lot of money. So let me leave you with this. Don't put the burden on the ones of that, of us that are already burdened. We're paying our bills, a lot of us don't complain, we don't like to bother you all, we know you're doing the best you can. Just remember us. Thank you.
As I think I stated earlier, the Utilities Commission did not receive any information on this. I know the meeting took place, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wright, January 27th, and I had requested at a city council meeting that it be transparent, that there be public access to this information, and we have not received anything. In fact, I, I'm really sorry that last year, this wasn't vetted at a joint meeting of the Utilities and the Finance Commission. Just to recap for the community, you may recall at that time, FPL made an offer, and correct me, please, Mr. O'Connor, if I'm wrong in the numbers, they made an offer of 13, and the valuation was 64.
Let me set the record a little straight here. On our website, under electric, is the proposal and the breakdown of the cost for Indian River Shores and the sale and transfer of the assets. It's dated December the 16th, 2015. It is on the website. I believe all the documents that we have received from Chef have been transmitted to Tammy and sent out to everybody. This, and, but that analysis is on the website, and it was presented, Chef made the presentation to both the Finance Commission and the Utility Commission as to the breakdown of how he came and arrived at his number.
Yeah, I appreciate that. What I'm talking about is the meeting that was in Tallahassee, the end of January, January 27th, so it wasn't, wouldn't have been available in December.
Right, right. Well, that was, that was how he arrived at his number, and it was vetted before it went to Indian River Shores.
No, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't make it clear. I'm talking about the results of that meeting in January.
And I think that he sent, and I don't have a copy of that in front of me, but I believe he sent, it was like a page and a half or something, it wasn't very much.
Yes, yes, you, you said that earlier. I appreciate a copy of that when you get a chance, and I'm sure the rest of the Utilities Commission, too. But to, to back up a minute, I think it's a shame, really, that this wasn't vetted last year when the, when FPL first made the offer, and the val, I'm not going to say it was a counteroffer, my understanding is it wasn't, but that the valuation was set at 64 million. Probably at that time, it should have come before a joint commission meeting, and perhaps it's not too late if what's being proposed now is a meeting between city managers and mayors, or maybe it could be just city managers, if you, that could be done, I mean, a joint meeting of the Financing Utilities Commission could provide a forum for that. But I, I have a further question on it, and that is, with regard to this resolution, what is the cost of it? I mean, I assume that this involves lawyers, and what, what is the cost? And if there's a cost attached to it, what fund does it come out of? And beyond that, should that be vetted before the Utilities and Finance Commission? I mean, what kind of money is, is involved in this resolution? It will go to lawyers.
Depends on how long the resolution meetings go. The last one we had, I think we had two or three meetings, three meetings on that, and that all depends on how much discussion and progress is...
I think we had two meetings each was a day, each was a part of a day, about a half day.
And then you had two mediations. And then you had two mediation sessions.
We had, we had two mediation, and each one was out at Indian, the college, and one was...
This is a process that, that you're either going to do now, or in the future, coming months, or you're going to do it after November 1st. It's required by law.
And this is a, this is a preventative thing. We're, we're trying to prevent hostilities in the future. I mean, what we're trying to do is sit down and, and things have, things calm down, so it'll save us more money, hopefully, than we'll spend.
Do you have a projection for it at the moment, though? In terms of this specific resolution, is there a dollar amount attached to this resolution?
I would say it's a couple hundred dollars to put it together, and then it's a, a couple of meetings of, of two lawyers for a few hours, you know? It's a, it's a, let's say it's $5,000.
I'll tell you, you know, another concern of mine is that the, in, in late January, this, this meeting in Tallahassee, I think the behind closed doors scenario is, it's not, it's just not a good scenario. You know, like I said, we still didn't get the information from January 27th, and it seems like we're doing the behind the closed doors thing again here. And that's why, as I said, I invite it to be vetted before a joint meeting of Utilities Finance, or if there's another venue that's appropriate, then I'd love to hear about that. But behind the closed doors and the, and the, you know, the bills are, are running up, are adding up, it's, it's less than ideal, put it that way.
It's not, it's not behind closed doors at all. What they're doing is they're trying to sit down and talk to each other about what each one, each one is charging, each one thinks their numbers are. And then they're going to conclude with that and give us a, a report on that.
Well, I guess what I'm referring to, Mr. Old, is that in the January 27th meeting, my understanding is that that was approximately a two-hour meeting, and that we ended up with a one-page report. So that, that's, I mean, that, to me, a two-hour meeting becoming a one-page report probably is not the level of transparency that, that would be hoped for.
We, we agreed to that, and we had public discussion, and you could have brought that point up when we agreed to that. Chef, would you address that question? As to the circumstances of that meeting in Tallahassee? My recall is, is that we did that in order to save money so that you guys could actually talk without doing the travel expenses, and additional, there were some sensitive items that you needed to talk about that were not, you didn't want to have public. That gave you the freedom to talk about those sensitive items.
As regards the meeting in Tallahassee, everything you said is true, and if the meeting was held at the request, really, it was held at the request of the shores, they said, please explain to us substantively, they said, please explain to us the basis for your $64.5 million. We said, okay, let's sit down and walk through it. We had big copies, you know, seven, 11 by 17 copies of the stuff, and we, we talked about things, and, and our expert was there, and their expert was there, and we talked about stuff. And they said, you know, what about this, what about that? What about looking at this from a revenue requirements perspective? We said, we will do that. Regarding, regarding the, the upcoming process relative to the town's ordinance and the, and the resolution that is on the table presented to you by our recommendation, I can't tell you how much that'll cost, because I don't know if it's going to be one conflict assessment meeting or multiple conflict assessment meetings and a mediation. I don't know. So I, I don't know the answer to that. But I can tell you that those meetings, and well, certainly the conflict assessment meeting will be public, and, and given the precedent that we set wisely or otherwise, to have the mediation be in public, usually you don't have mediations in public, but we did in this case, for the sake of transparency, which is fine with me. But, you know, if we, the, probably those mediations will be in public, too. You know, it was in the big auditorium out at, at the, out at the college.
The majority of the legal costs that were billed to the city of Vero Beach, would you say that they are in response to Indian River Shores' action?
I'd say every cent with respect to the, to the shores, and every cent with respect to the county, you know, has, has all been billed in response to actions initiated by Indian River Shores on the one hand, and Indian River County on the other. Now, we did, full disclosure, we did file our own petition for declaratory statement with the PSC on the county matter as it was pending, and to be blunt, the reason we did that was to pose the right question to the Public Service Commission instead of the 14 questions that the county posed. The right question was, does the franchise agreement between, the expiration of the franchise agreement between Indian River County and the city of Vero Beach have any effect on whether Vero Beach continues to serve, or does Vero Beach have the continuing right and obligation to serve pursuant to the commission's territorial orders? That was the right question. We asked that question, the PSC answered it. That's really the only thing that, that we have initiated here. The, the other big chunk, just as long as we're here, the other big chunk of costs that we incurred was more than $300,000 spent, you know, evaluating at great length and negotiating at great length, the power purchase, the new power purchase agreement with OUC, which saves you well north of $100 million NPV and closer to $200 million nominal.
We're still under public comment for this motion in a second. Mr. Wilson, let me, John, did you want to...
Yeah, I was going to say, all of my time has been handling what Indian River Shores has done and, and responding to that. That's all my time. I have done nothing as it relates to filing anything in the PSC. I've reviewed it, but all my time has been dealing with Indian River Shores. Let me also say, as, as a trial lawyer, which we look at things a little differently, under the rules in Florida, any mediation is to be confidential. And you have waived that confidentiality when you hold these mediations in the public. That's your choice. But I will tell you, in every other mediation I have with my clients, I've never had a client waive the medi, waive the confidentiality portion of the mediation process. And the reason is, was the reason they like to do it in kind of confidential, because people can be open and not talk about, and talk about things they would not talk about if it could be used later on in court. And that's the reason why the rule says that in mediations in Florida, there's a confidentiality, and you sign it, and you can't use anything, so people are more free to talk to each other. I think when you do it in the open, you, you, you lose some of that. But, but I was not involved in the first part, haven't been involved, but I think it's important to know that this council's gone above and beyond when it waived that confidentiality, and, and that's something that most clients do not do.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Council. Charlie Wilson, 3815, eighth place. First of all, Mr. Turner, thank you very much for bringing this up. I'm sorry that you're having a hard time this week, and thank you for all the work that you do, and, and I appreciate it. I don't want to get into a confrontation. I, I just was watching some of the conversation here, and it sort of reminds me of the spin, you know? This is called the spin. And the best example I can give of the spin is, there was a race between the Russians and the Americans, and they had two cars, and they raced around the track, and the Americans won. And the headline in the American papers were, "America Wins Race," and the headline in the Russian papers was, "America Comes in Last," and Russia came in second. And it's all in how you look at that spin, and that's how this conversation is taking place. I'd like to point out that the shores didn't just sit out there and decide to come and sue the city of Vero Beach. The reason the shores had to sue the city of Vero Beach was they were being charged unconscionable rates by an inefficient operation...
I object to that, Mr. Wilson. That is not a true statement. I object. Continue on, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, the courts are still deciding that. Go ahead.
Mr. Winger, thank you for mentioning it, that the fact is, is that when you, when you say that everything that these lawyers are doing since 9:30 this morning at X number of dollars, probably more than most of the people in Vero Beach make in a month, has been spent so far this morning on this particular issue, that you're looking at numbers that were just made up. You know, you started off by saying, let's get a fair price. Well, you got a fair price, and you rejected it. You got to remember that...
I object. That's also not true. We did not reject. The contract's still on the table.
The vote was 3 to 2, and you were the deciding vote, Mr. Mayor.
It's not so. It's not so. It's not true.
The fact is, is you prevented the sale to Vero Electric. We told you what would happen.
It's not true. I object.
Could we extend the courtesy to Mr. Wilson to let him finish his thought, please?
We told you what would happen if the sale to Vero Electric was not accepted. You took a vote, you didn't accept it. 3 to 2, march. Look at the gen, look at the minutes, okay? The fact is, is you've now presented them with a number. If you don't want to sell your house, the way you don't sell your house is put an asking price on it that nobody can pay. And the cit, the fact is, is that FMPA doesn't want to sell their house, the three of you don't want to sell the house, and these two attorneys, representing the FMPA's interest really well, don't want to sell the house. But the reason that, don't blame the shores, because the shores has a right to defend their citizens from an additional cost that they would not have if they were on FPNL. How's that? Is that, is that an accurate statement, Mr. Winger?
No, sir.
You're, you're telling me that F, that the Indian River Shores' customers would not be paying less if they were on FNP, FPNL?
I'm, I, what I'm telling you, Mr. Wilson, is this, the city of Vero Beach is at roughly the median below three of the investor-owned utilities in the state. There's nothing that entitles me to go to Publix or go anyplace else and get the lowest rate in the state.
Entitles you to go to a store.
What you're saying is, Indian River Shores is entitled to the lowest rate of the state. I will point out to you that Florida Power and Light was cited in the Wall Street Journal yesterday for $4 billion worth of poor hedges. I would also cite to you that Florida Power and Light's building a plan out here that's going to raise their rates materially. But my underlying point is, nothing entitles anyone to have the lowest price. We do not have the lowest price. But nothing entitles Indian River Shores to have a price. Most of those people have, with their other houses, other places in the United States, have higher rates. So what you're saying is, they're entitled somehow or another to have the lowest rates. That's not true.
Actually, I'm not saying that, but, but, yeah, I mean, you're seeming to be speaking for me, but, you know, the, what I am saying is, is that you're sitting here talking about how bad the shores are, and how bad the shores treat the city of Vero Beach. And I'm, what I'm here to say is that's at least partially in response to the city of Vero Beach treating them badly by charging them more. And it could have been changed. It is absolutely their right to do what they are doing. But to say that it is, all you're doing is just minding your own business, and all of a sudden the poor old mean people from the shores come and pick on you. And when you say in your, in your conferences that you're just... And when you say in your, in your conferences that you're just representing that the poor old people at Indian River Shores are picking on the people of Vero Beach, the fact is, I'd just like to make that point, they're not picking on the people of Vero Beach. We are neighbors. We are friends. Who they're picking on is the three of you that are leading the city of Vero Beach in the abyss by not allowing these sales to go through. And you've made up a series of numbers that they now have to defend themselves. So you can't say that you're, that you're, all you're doing is just poor old Vero Beach is getting picked on by those mean old big people in Indian River Shores, because it just isn't the fact.
Mr. Wilson, my opinion is, any solution that keeps the people of Vero Beach whole and does not increase their costs or their rate is great. But, you know, when we had the meeting, first mediation meeting at Indian River Shores, they were talking about three to 10 million. And at that meeting, I publicly stated, I did again at the State College, that if you added a zero, if Florida Power and Light was there, it was someplace between 30 and 100. Now, the, the point is, we are underwater on FMPA. And to straddle the people of Vero Beach, and, you know, one other thing that comes up that's irritating, they talk about, they have two different rates. You do realize that the northern part of the system was annexed in 1984 for what it's worth. What, what I'm trying to say to you is, I'll say it simply, I will never vote for something that, as Mr. Diggs suggested, that will penalize the people of Vero Beach to reward other people. I was, I swore an oath and I am not going to violate it. I'm sorry.
You know what? I believe you, Mr. Turner, that you wouldn't do that, because it's really too bad that what's being set up here is that you've got a group of people in a neighborhood called Riomar. And those people have so much influence on this commission, on this council, that it is more important for them not to pay taxes than for everybody else to pay higher electric rates. The reason you're underwater with FMPA is because you're still in FMPA. If you'd gotten out of FMPA when we tried to get you out of FMPA, when we had the chance, you wouldn't be underwater with FMPA. But the fact is, is you're absolutely right, sir, is that I know that you will never vote for anything because the people that back you will never vote for that. And, and I can tell you, sir, that the solution to this perhaps is, elections have consequences. And you know what? When two of you are gone and they fire these two attorneys and we take care of this issue so that it closes and we're able to get along in this community again, we'll be all set. And if you're the only one sitting there saying no, that would be fine. You sit right there for your next two years and vote no every time.
Great.
But eventually, eventually, the public's going to understand what you've done to them.
Great. Thank you for your comment.
Peter Gori, I'm chairman of the Finance Commission. I just want to set some, three issues I want to handle. One, in terms of the entire process that we have worked on, in terms of the OUC contract, in terms of the handling of these various court cases and the mediation. I've been at all of them as well. When I have an issue, I call Chef or I call Jim and discuss at length what these issues are and I get a response. And I follow that up at our meetings in terms to report what the several issues are and try to understand them, and I think I have a fair grasp of them. So I have kept track of this, been to all of the meetings. I've talked to the shores as well. And I understand, I believe, what these issues are and the fact that there has been information out there. I have sought it. I have had public request. I have read some of the documents, all of the documents that I think are viable. So the issue of tracking and keeping up with the issues, as I said, we talk rather often, sir, that was the first issue in terms of doing due diligence on the Finance Commission in terms of keeping up with this electrical issue. The second thing is the issue of rates. There are three, there are six investor-owned companies in the, in the state of Florida. Three of them have rates per 100,000 at $132 plus. Why? Because they go to the PSC. And how does the PSC set rates? They set it based on return on equity. And the turn on equity is between 10 and 17 percent. So how do you set rates? The standards are, you take all of the revenues, you subtract debt, you subtract operating expenses, you subtract taxes, and then you apply between 10 and 11 percent for allowable rate of return. In the city of Vero Beach, there's a return about, which is 6 percent of revenues, not equity, 6 percent of revenues. So the bottom line is about 5.4 mil. Having said that, if you look at what our total equity is, it's about 4.5. Chef, was that on the 2014 analysis you?
That's the right order.
So that's the return on investment. On equity, I'm sorry. As opposed to the reason that Gulf Power has $135, $134 per hundred, is that those standards are applied. If the city of Vero Beach was rated by the PSC and those same standards were applied, the rates would go up for everyone. Last thing, in the Roslin versus OUC court case some years ago, Roslin claimed that the OUC was charging rates which were confiscatory. The PSC at the time, and the courts, the court decided that, that they were not unreasonable and the challenger was charged court cost. One concept that could be used is that since the shores and the county have challenged the city of Vero Beach and we are incurring costs, we could put a surcharge on those customers who are coming from those entities that are incurring our costs. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further comment? Ms. Turner, if you would be so kind as to restate that motion so we all know what it is.
I will. I just wanted to share with you an old gypsy curse that my father would tell, told me about as a child, saying that may your days be filled with lawyers. And I think that's kind of where we are as far as being cursed at the moment. I make a motion to set up a meeting with the mayors and city managers of Vero Beach and Indian River Shores, along with FPL, to negotiate terms of agreement for the sale of Vero Electric's Indian River Shore service to FPL and report back to the respective councils for action.
Okay. Is there any other counsel? I mean, quite frankly, my, my position is, I'm not going to negotiate with somebody who is currently suing us. That's just, I'm not going to go that direction. They want to come to the table, they can come to the table without trying to twist our arms. I don't, I've never done that. I don't have a problem meeting with them. I don't have a problem getting the numbers. And I don't have a problem starting some type of negotiation, but I'm not going to commit to anything. I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna second Mrs. Oh, no, it's already second. We're gonna call a question here in a second. We're just making final arguments.
I, my, my issue is, I think we ought to at least come, finish with this whole process of getting the numbers correct so that we, we know exactly where we are in the numbers. I think it's premature to meet with them right this second, but I'm, I'm not against meeting with them at all.
I, my opinion is, we hired Chef Wright and Mr. Frost to defend us and, if necessary, to negotiate with us. It's improper to do it any other way. And to negotiate in public is crazy.
Okay. Ms. Vock, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
No.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Oul?
No.
Mayor Kramer?
No. And I would like to make a motion that we continue talking with Indian River Shores about possibilities in the numbers so that we can get clarifications and possibilities in the, in the future.
I'd like to make a motion, still, well, I, I won't make a motion, but we need to pass this resolution.
Well, I just, would you, I just need a second. We just want to continue talking with the shores.
I think that's necessary.
Well, that's in regard to their-
Through Chef, yeah.
That's in regard to their case later. I mean, I, I have no problem continuing on talking with the shores and I would like to do so. And I don't want this motion to sit out there as if we're not going to continue to talk with the shores. We're going to continue to talk with the shores.
The important thing about talking with the shores is also bringing in FPL, who's a critical party to this whole deal. Indian River Shores does not want to run electric utility. They want to have their whole community serviced by FPL. I think it's imperative that you bring all the parties together so you can come up with the most creative solution for everyone.
I don't think I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the committal of, of making a sale. I want to get the numbers out there. If FPNL wants, wants to come and meet, great, let's meet.
Meeting's not going to commit us to a sale. Meeting's not going to commit us to any sale and we're not asking to settle.
I'll put forward the motion again, please, and modify it as follows.
Okay, I've already made a motion that we continue to talk with, with Indian River Shores. Is it not going anywhere?
Let me ask you a question. When you say continue to talk, who's going to talk and on what basis?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll continue to talk with Indian River Shores if FPNL wants to be a part of it. That's fine.
No, I, I, I would second it. If you're going to talk to the mayor, I have no problem with that.
Okay, that's fine.
And you're going to do it in private. A carnival, no.
All right, I would agree with that.
I second it then.
Okay. You guys have any questions?
Well, I don't, I don't think, Ms. Turner, did you specify whether, what you're-
No, we're on his motion.
I didn't have the opportunity, Mr. Howell, there was already a motion on the floor.
No questions, thank you.
But I'll come down.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? She's opposed. Motion passes three to two.
Making a motion that we set up a meeting with the mayor, the city manager of Vero Beach and Indian River Shores, along with FPL, to discuss a resolution of Indian River Shores-Vero Beach litigation and report back to the respective councils for action.
I think that's what they're, they're setting.
Would that, would that be-
We're going to relitigate litigation?
That's government mandated. That has nothing to do with this ordinance. It says government mandated arbitrage.
Just to clarify, in public or in private?
In private.
I'll second. Okay, so what's the difference between what we just did and what they just did? Good question.
Not my issue.
I am requesting a specific meeting to be set up with specific parties and to have it, results presented back to council.
She's suggesting that we should have a negotiation around our attorneys and experts. I think it's fine for you to have a discussion with the mayor of Indian River Shores, as I've repeatedly said from this dais. I do not think setting up a quasi-negotiation makes any amount of sense.
Because it might be successful. I mean, we've been going along with this with the attorneys and the mediation for two years and we've gotten nowhere. Let's try to get an open forum with some creative new ideas. This is a no-cost, no-risk option. None.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you. I mean, I, I'm meeting with them, I'll meet with FPNL, I'll meet with the, with the mayor. I don't have a problem with that. You know, I don't have a problem with selling off the shores. I have a problem with throwing the city of Vero Beach under the bus and the county residents under the bus.
No, and I am not asking that to happen.
It really bothers me, excuse me, it really bothers me that nobody seems to care that we're getting enough money to argue that we should throw it away at the lowest cost and not have any care that you get enough to make sure that the Indian River County people and Vero Beach people stay whole. That really bothers me.
Mr. Mayor, nobody has suggested that. All I'm asking is that you at least open the door to a discussion.
When have I not opened that? I have talked-
You just voted against the motion twice, so I guess to me it's that you're open to the-
No, I just made a motion and I did it and I did it in action. And I've been for a partial sale for friggin' five years. Where were you?
So are we, are we going to sit down with FPL and the city manager and-
Yeah, that's what we did.
Are we, are we going, without our lawyers in private? Is that, is that what's going to happen? That's what I'm asking.
I don't have a problem if the lawyers are there. I would actually prefer it's going to be there if you're going to start talking numbers.
It's more than lawyers too. It's, we have, we have an economist and experts and all.
And we're no longer, it's no longer a no-cost option. That's what I'm saying.
Keep, keep, just keep paying.
Yeah.
Well, we are responding to what the shores is doing.
Bad guys are the shores, let's be honest.
We are responding. They are pushing the costs, not us.
I think we're done.
Mr. Wright, we have this resolution. We need to make a motion to get this going?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make a motion that we pass this resolution.
I'll second it.
All right. Do we have any, do I dare say, do we have any public comment or any members from the council? Ms. Vock, would you call the roll?
Mr. Howell?
No.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Oul?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Passes three to two.
Wonderful. We get on to the next item, city clerks matters.
We have a lien reduction for 2245-
Thank you.
27th Avenue and the police chief. Handle that.
Good afternoon, new mayor, city council members. We have a request for a lien reduction. Mr. Kevin Hawkins, who I believe is right there, he submitted an application for a reduction of liens on the property located at 2245 27th Avenue and the adjoining vacant lot on Patil Avenue. It's essentially a lot with a home and then a vacant lot. And this dates back to, I believe, 1998 with some fines and liens to the total of $26,996.37 with the previous owner. Of course, Mr. Hawkins, in recently purchasing this property, knew about these, these liens and fines, what have you, that were on the books. On the first month of, January 23rd of 2014, we cited public nuisance violations for weeds, grass and undergrowth at a height more than 12 inches in garbage and debris throughout the property there. And then on January 5th of 2015, for a public nuisance violation for open windows and doors and otherwise unsecured, unoccupied or abandoned structures. We had to do some work with regard to the weeds and the grass and, of course, boarding up that home. So my recommendation, as you, as you see at the end of my notes, is to take into account the above considerations that I've made. The staff recommends the amount of liens be reduced from $26,996.37 to $8,110.8. This amount includes all work, recording and administrative fees incurred by the city of Vero Beach as mentioned above. So essentially, that $8,000 is the work that we put out as a city with regard to the two public nuisance violations in 2014 and 2015.
Chief, does, does reducing that amount get the, find the lien paid? By, by reducing the amount, does it, how does that resolve the situation?
Well, the, the, we would just basically say, if we agree to that, that that's what he has to pay as a property owner. A couple of things, and he may wish to speak as well, and we've talked, Mr. Hawkins and myself as well. I guess the one, the one building is, is a bit of an eyesore and there's some graffiti and as, as community, we would certainly like to see that demolished and improved there. And apparently, there's some asbestos concerns as well, that you, I believe, have a, a backup sheet as well from a, an estimate from a Timothy Rose Contracting, Inc., regarding some work that needs to be done as well. I believe he purchased the property, he can correct me if I'm wrong, for $16,200.
Correct.
And then again, with the liens totaling that, almost $27,000. And again, I think, I believe it's fair. And I, and I think Mr. Hawkins will essentially say it's fair as well in regard to the 8,000. That's the work, again, that we have, as a city, has put into trying to keep that property up, not being the owner. So we'd like to at least recoup those, those costs. And again, that equals that $8,000 mark.
Thank you. You know, David, for what it's worth, I don't know, I don't have much of a strong opinion on this, but the two lots put together are a very, very nice property and they're in a very nice neighborhood. So, I mean, they're, they're certainly worth the 16 plus the 27, and I'm not trying to justify that, don't get me wrong.
get me wrong. I'm just saying, and I will tell you that it's a deplorable state as it is now. I'm glad it got purchased. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the reduction, as long as the lien gets paid.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Is there any members of the public that'd like to speak on this matter?
I have just a suggestion that we put a time limit, that the payment has to be made within the next 30 days, or the lien would be revisited by the city council. And that way, to answer your...
I was just going to say, in whatever amount the council approves, once that, we won't even prepare a release of lien, all these liens until that's actually paid.
Okay.
But that way it gives a timeframe for the property to start getting.
I'll go along with it.
And Mr. Hawkins is here as well. He'd like to say a few words.
Okay, I'm Kevin Hawkins, 226 Ocean Way. I think the city is, or Mr. Curry is offering a very fair settlement. The only problem with the situation is the, according to the test from a certified, you know, provider, the building is in much worse shape than it originally, I thought. And the cost of demolishing, excuse me, taking the building down is about three times what I had originally anticipated. And so, I'm kind of in a dilemma in the sense that even with the dramatic reduction in the fees, it still is kind of a situation where it's probably not really worth doing with the $8,000 fee. I don't want to sound wrong, or, you know, get anybody rattled, but the reality of it all is, with the demolition and the fees and the cost and everything else, it is a kind of a difficult situation in order to move forward with that, in all honesty.
Mr. Hawkins, when you purchased this property, knowing that it had $27,000 with the lien on it, what did you anticipate that lien reduction would be? You know, if you say that now that we're offering a significant reduction, and that that's not acceptable.
Right, well, the experiences I've had have been basically with Indian River County over the years in code enforcement violations. And when you come, when you bring the property back into the proper code, it's usually around 10% of the fee is what my history has been with Indian River County, because most of the time, it's usually just weeds and grass and nothing like this. This building definitely needs to come down, and it's, you can see from, and it's just an estimate that I have, or you can see from the estimate that it's a very...
Yeah, $32,000, it's significant.
That may be significantly higher, because it does have to be handled in the proper way. So that's really kind of where it's really at.
So, Mr. Hawkins, and forgive me, I don't mean to insult you in any way, but I could imagine a situation where you'd like to see the lien reduced and give yourself a better opportunity of getting out from under this building and have somebody else come along, pick it up with the reduced lien, and no timeframe for that lien to be paid.
Well, I don't have a problem with the timeframe on paying the lien, as far as that goes. I was just hoping that the city would possibly consider an offer where I would agree to a further reduced fine and a specific time limit to raise the building. Not just pay the fine, but actually take the building down and take care of the problem, because it is an ongoing problem with the city, and it's going to continue to be one until the building is demolished.
The city needs to recoup its costs, no matter what the end result is. I don't know if we could, maybe Wayne could speak to this, but there may be a situation where the lien stands, but we give you more time to do your remediation work, and the lien remains, and in fact, at some point would probably accrue. I don't even know if that's possible, but is that clear?
What the chief has basically agreed to support is the out-of-pocket that the city had. Does include some interest charges, which you could certainly consider waiving. It's waiving 100% of all the past civil penalties, is what I believe is correct, chief. Something else that wasn't mentioned, this property previously had already been noticed by the building official for demolition. That changed when ownership changed. Basically, it was in foreclosure. This gentleman purchased the property. It had been purchased once before, and then the buyer backed out because they found out about the liens, hadn't done their homework. But my understanding is if the building official hasn't already, the building official probably will be noticing this gentleman, that he's going to have 60 days to either remedy it or tear it down. So that's something to keep in mind, too. And that's under the standard unsafe building abatement code.
Do you have an estimate of what the interest would be?
Yes, the interest that the chief has on there is $1,476.53.
Is that correct?
If you were willing to deduct that, you'd get down to $66,3355.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I agree with Mr. Howell, what he said. I mean, the money that the city spent was spent by the taxpayers. It should be recouped, in my opinion. I don't care about the interest.
I don't care about the interest.
Just as long as we get an agreement as to when he's going to take the house down.
That's right.
We get stuck, and we have to take the house down, put another lien on the property, then we're...
That's right.
And that's eventually what happens if the, what we call Sueback, the standard unsafe building abatement code process is fulfilled, the city ends up tearing it down, paying for that, and there's another lien on the property.
It's actually quite a nice lot when you're all said and done with it. But with that said and done, I agree with what you said, Mr. City Manager. Jim?
Jim, can we push the timeframe to 60 days?
I have no problem with that, or maybe it coincides when the house, the building comes down?
Yeah.
And that's when the reduction in lien takes place.
I think that'd be appropriate.
You want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we reduce the cost of the penalties.
It's not penalties. It's actually nuisance abatement liens, is what he's paying.
I'll make a motion.
But you would be accepting that payment to clear all the liens.
Make a motion that we reduce the nuisance, nuisance abatement liens from $26,996.37 to six, what was the figure, 6,000?
$66,3355.
$66,3355, and that the appellate has 60 days to pay, well, is going to, the payment is going to coincide with the abatement date, which is approximately 60 days. Right, Jim?
Correct. That will keep us from exercising the code enforcement and tearing down the house.
And this payment will...
You're officially giving him a 60-day notice today.
And this payment will eliminate all other liens.
Correct.
Correct. That's my, that's my motion. City liens, that's my motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I have one other issue. That's fine. Thank you very much. I'll take care of it. It'll be done hopefully in 60 days. It depends on when I get my permit through the environmental health, but I do have the asbestos report, and I'll get on it immediately, and I'm confident we can get it taken care of.
Thank you.
One other issue that I spoke with the city attorney about briefly. I also have another issue on another property. I don't know if we can discuss it now. It's just a small lot in the city I bought that also has a, the same type of scenario on, just overgrown weeds, that came up, originally started at $300 a number of years ago, and it's up to $1,800 or $1,600 or $1,700 now. That if I could get some sort of a reduction on that, I'd be happy to pay that today to clear it up as well.
Has this case been discussed by the code enforcement board already?
What I would like to recommend is we not settle something at the dais today. Let him make application, do the application of that.
I mentioned that earlier, when he brought this to my attention.
Okay, thank you.
You've got precedence here, so I mean, at least be encouraged you've got precedence, but we'd like to go through the channels if possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that council no longer needs Mr. Frost and me to be here for anything else that's coming forward, council today.
Ms. Turner, did you get your item?
No, I think we discussed that sufficiently.
Okay.
So I think without, I don't think the council has any objection to you.
Thank you very much.
Going off clock. Thank you. Ms. Vock, you have appointments?
I do. We have an appointment to the tree and beautification commission. Presently, there is one full member in two alternate positions open on this board, and Mrs. Barbara Lee would like to serve as a full member on the commission. And currently, we have no other applications on file.
Motion to appoint Ms. Barbara Lee.
Semer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And attached, you'll see, we do have some of the other appointments on our boards, just to name a few. Code enforcement board, historic downtown economic development zone, historic preservation commission, tree and beautification commission, utilities commission, and veterans memorial island sanctuary advisory committee. And just one other item, I just wanted to remind council that on Friday night at 5:30, we will have the ribbon cutting for the new mural and the playground equipment at Riverside Park. Thank you.
Question from Ms. Vock?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess following this meeting, that we've ended up with seven scheduled presentations. If the council would consider limiting presentations per meeting.
Yeah, do for that.
Especially for tonight meeting.
I suggest a limit to no more than four for the future, but council, I fear.
That's actually what we have for our proclamations. We limit them to four, so.
I, yeah, I think.
I think the agenda today was a little bit too much for one agenda. It was a heavy agenda.
We learned a lot, though.
Everybody had agreed with that, that we'll limit it to four.
Okay. City managers matters.
The one item I have is, as you know, we have declared the nine-hole golf course at Dodger Town is surplus, and we recommended that we hire someone, a real estate agent, in order to market that property. So we sent out an RFP and received some proposals. Myself, Monty Falls Public Works, and Tim McGarry, the planning director, sat down and interviewed the four providers that we had, that the contracts that came in, proposals. And we are recommending Collier International. We have a couple of reasons for that. One is that they do have a Vero presence, i.e., the, one of the principals who spoke on behalf of Collier is a resident of the city of Vero Beach. The second is, is that they have done work with some of the real estate agents in the city of Vero Beach and other projects they've done. And the third is that their fee schedule is very clear. It's 4% if they sell it themselves. It's 5% if they have another broker involved in the sale of the property. In some of the proposals, they were not as clear, and I think this really makes it very simplistic for us to move forward. Collier has a real national presence that we hopefully will be able to draw upon some of their name people in order to find buyers for this property. Hopefully, will help keep the price where we want it to be. The other is, is the, one of the provisions, they want a one-year contract, which we would highly recommend, because they're going to be responsible for all the promotions, the advertising, doing all the brochures, and will do this on their, on their dollar. And we think that is a reasonable period of time in order to try to market the property.
Jim, don't I remember that the Collier, and of course, there's four inches, well, three inches of stuff, exaggerating, also was suggesting that for a period of time, 90 days or something, that it'd be listed without a price to see what we get?
Yes, sir. The marketing strategy, we were leaving to their discretion. That's what we're hiring them for, in order to use whatever strategies that are out there in the open market. Obviously, the comparables in the area are very difficult to come by because of the type of property we have and the location.
Is there any public comment considering this?
I believe we have someone from Collier. If you want to hear from him, I think he's sat through the whole day.
You went a long way.
Yeah, right.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. With, if there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.
Congratulations.
We will be moving forward with the promotion and sale of this property. Thank you very much, and we'll be discussing.
For clarification, there will be a realtor's contract. Would you like to bring that back to council to look at that next meeting?
I think we're going to have to, if you're going to have.
I mean, you could authorize the city management. I mean, it's going to be full of terms and conditions, so.
We like to read things before we sign them.
We'll get it back to you next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have some other issues for the city manager, if that's all right. Firstly, the electric staff, Diane actually did a great job of going over the OUC bills. I've been shocked how much lower the OUC bills and the average power costs have been since the contract was signed. But she found an overbilling of $1,667,207.91, which we got back last month, which I think is rather spectacular, which goes in the cash bill, I guess. The next one is, we have a letter here from, from Mr. Baird at the county, asking to move the hub for the airshow, the 25th and 26th. And I just, I'm kind of of the opinion, I mean, I don't really have any problem with that, except that there'd be some sort of a notification of the neighbors and some assurance that it really gets removed after two days.
Well, we do have assurance. I have already approved that. I thought that was an administrative function. It is only for two days, and if you'll note, it's a Saturday and a Sunday. Go line does not run on Sundays. And so I have assurances in writing from Mr. Baird that they will continue the go line at the airport until that Friday, the Friday, and then Saturday, they will have go line at the old hub. On Monday morning, they will start go line back at the airport. He understands that there would be a violation of zoning code otherwise.
Yes, how are the, I mean, there's going to be a neighbor or two that are going to be surprised, I should think.
I'm not sure, because your ridership folks are not going to all move over there for one day. So I don't think you'll see any real disruption of that. And they, we do have buses in that area already, and they can come out, and they have been coming out, at the county administration building facility. But for one Saturday, I just could not see that there'd be any interruption. The other thing is, is you're going to have volunteers parking at the county administration building for the airshow as well, so there's going to be movement in that direction.
Are they going to ride the go line, the volunteers? Is that the plan?
More than likely, yes.
All right. My next subject is, on March 29th, you sent the mayor and council a scope of work. My question really is, when do we deal with this, or how do we deal with it, or, you know, what's the next step? I don't know.
If you're looking at my recommendation, we wait until we clear the back end of the electric power plant site, until we can get a full visual. And then, this is a scope of services, as requested, just to give you input as to how it would go. If we put out an RFP, you have to put a scope of services out. As I had indicated to you, to council in the past, I'm not sure if you're doing something that's, you know, six or nine years out, that you need to do an economic study. In the presentation from the regional planning council, they bring in economists and do that, but I think projections five years out is very difficult to really live by and make decisions. I think ours would really, a land use plan and the transportation issue to address the 17th and Indian River Boulevard area. That was where we heard from citizens the most that had some concerns about the land use. But I think it's farther down, you know, you've heard that at the wastewater treatment plant, if in fact, you're ready to spend $35 million today, it'd be about six years to move that. The second thing is, is the power plant. We're still in that first year of taking it down. And I'm, I guess, this is just me, but I think when you see the visual of that property, the perceptions that the public's going to have is totally different than what we have today. And when we start asking for input as to the potential uses of that property, I think you're going to get more than let's build a casino type of thing.
Well, you know, that would say the, I'm going to use the word, quote, visioning, unquote, would probably not occur till...
December, January.
Yeah.
I disagree with the economic side of it. I think that the money side of this really comes into play. And you've got to kind of know what's going to happen in terms of loans, and what's going to happen in terms of anything else that happens. Construction, tearing down, recovery of some of the materials that are sold, all the kind of economics really come into this.
Oh, you have that. The economics that I'm talking about is doing the planning, the land use plan. Does somebody come in and say, I recommend we have a marina there, and this is what your rate of return is going to be?
Right, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. No, you have the economics, and we've given presentations as to how we're taking the parts and moving on the power, the substation and stuff.
One other thing, then I'll leave you alone. We, Monty Falls was good enough on March 16th to pass us a bill from the railroad for 135... And this is for, you helped me decode it.
Twenty-sixth Street crossing. I was going to ask the same question, Mr. Winger. I was going to say, I was at the rally of the rails last Saturday, one before, I've lost track of days, anyway, against the railroad, and you're wondering, are they pushing this forward, you know?
We paid one last.
Penalizing us, or whatever, because of our opposition to this railroad?
I think it's just punishment. I mean, I.
We had one last year that was about $100,000, so this one's grown by 35. And when we contacted the railroad to try to protest it and say, wait a minute, if All Aboard Florida's coming through, what do we need to do? They're telling us this is for safety purposes, and it's being done by a company other than All Aboard Florida.
And it all may be lost, because we may have to do something all over again.
They didn't go quite that far.
Since we're still waiting on 90% drawings, that we don't have absolutely right, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions?
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes, sir.
Would you bring me up to speed on what's, how far along the fuel removal is?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think trucks 30 and 31 left today. There's approximately 37 truckloads in there. The last one probably will be different than the others, because it's going to have the water issue and the muck. But we're very close, we are hoping by the end of the week, we will have the tank empty. We are waiting for one more payment from them before we let them leave with the oil. But they've already deposited $44,000 with us, the next deposit's somewhere in the neighborhood of $700. And then, once they do that, then they have to come in and start cleaning the lines, and then they have to remove those pipes. And so those are the last two phases of where they are.
Great, thank you.
And that could take another 100 days, if they wanted to take that long.
The cleaning and the pipe.
The cleaning and the removal, yes, sir. And I don't, I'm hoping that they do not, they found a buyer for the oil quicker than they anticipated.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager? City attorney?
Just have for your review, the purchase-sell agreement for the diesel power plant. This was Mr. Rector that had submitted the proposal that the council said to go forward and negotiate. And you have in front of you the proposed purchase and sale agreement, which is basically along the lines of what he had proposed.
Where are we with the suit, countersuit with the original?
Well, the, with Gene O'Neill, who's our litigation attorney, along with Mr. Frost, on the actual lawsuit, as well as Sandra Rannick, who's a real estate attorney who helped us with the sale agreement and would be handling the closing for the city, they, they're, again, making a proposal to the current tenants to go ahead and officially terminate, and also have the bank, the lender on the leasehold mortgage, to go ahead and terminate the mortgage and any claim that they envisioned they could have. Gene had, Mr. O'Neill had talked to their attorney, the bank's attorney, some time back, and he had indicated that he didn't feel there wasn't going to be an issue with the bank releasing any interest that the city may need to have cleared up for the sale to go forward. In the litigation itself, as you may remember, the court had thrown out the fraud claim, leaving only the lease claims.
What I'm interested in is, does it cloud the sale?
It does. It does, to an extent. One of the obligations on the lease agreement, the purchase-sell agreement, is obviously to give clear title. And it does allow up to a year for closing, in order for that to happen. But we're hoping to be able to accomplish that much sooner.
So if, if it takes more than a year, what happens?
I believe we've worked in that we could potentially amend the agreement. I believe we have language in there that allows the city manager to basically administer this agreement.
But do you feel that the agreement we've got, basically, gives us enough room with the suits that's going on, so we're okay? Do you feel comfortable with it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
The good thing is, is we've acknowledged all of the warts associated with this, the court case being one of those warts. And Mr. Rector, the positive thing is, he's the one that requested the one year, as opposed to we were proposing six months. He also wanted in there a reference that he would sit down with us at the end of that time, if we wanted to extend it. He understands what we're doing. But he is also going to be spending money in this exercise over this period of time, and he wants to move forward, not with investing in the building, but doing the paperwork, maybe a site plan, approvals through P&amp;Z, and those type of things. So he is very anxious to try to get something done there. He's been following not only the environmental issues that we have, but also the court cases, and I think he's fully aware.
Is there any questions?
I think just public comment, and then whatever the council's pleasure.
Okay. Anybody like to speak on this? Saying none, entertaining a motion?
Yes.
I'll move.
Here's a second?
Yes, a second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
I do have one question for the city attorney, Mr. Mayor, if I might. I think we may all have been contacted by Joe Cornato, the owner of McDonald's, who's been struggling with issues with homeless intruding on sidewalks and blocking his business, et cetera. We had any luck looking at an ordinance, or how, what we could do to possibly help him?
Well, we are looking at that. Our ordinance is similar to the county's ordinance about panhandling. It's like one sentence, and it says you can't panhandle, except on a public sidewalk, which is a traditional public forum. Unfortunately, the U.S. Supreme Court, in a recent case, really had to do with signs, set out some pretty stringent guidelines, basically, on how to look at these things, on whether or not something was constitutional. And it's a free speech issue. Subsequent to that, other federal, at least one other federal court has applied that analysis to panhandling. So we're on very, a very slippery slope when it comes to trying to regulate free speech on a public sidewalk, on a right-of-way. Unfortunately, there's also a statute that had to do with interfering with traffic, that was found unconstitutional. So we don't have a lot of tools in our basket, but we are, in fact, meet Ashley down here. She is volunteering her time with the city attorney's office as an intern. She is licensed in Colorado, and has taken the Florida bar, and she thought she liked to see how local government works here in Vero Beach. So she's getting a cram course today. Ashley is actually taking a look at the ramifications, see if we can't formulate something. We've got some samples from other locations, there's some possibility there, if we really look at that compelling governmental interest in safety, maybe we can formulate something that would, would help, not just that business, but other businesses.
I'd like to be kept abreast of any of your findings. I was out, and I don't know what's going on, I don't know how this, I don't, in 30 years of being here, I don't recall ever having seen this in the past, but Sunday night, Sunday afternoon, headed south on US-1, I counted seven guys standing along US-1 between Route 60 and 17th Street with signs, and two of which were blocking the driveway at McDonald's. Basically, if you're exiting McDonald's, they were blocking the exit, which, there's got to be some way.
Now, they, he can call on that, when they're blocking the transaction, and he's pretty good at calling the police. I think the chief's been around there several times, and we are sort of keeping an eye, but.
And that's great, but it costs us time and money every time, too.
Absolutely.
That is correct. So if we can put some teeth in something, that'd be fantastic, and.
Yeah, just keep in mind, it would be a local ordinance, so if you want to have it created, when we get to that point, as a criminal ordinance, where they would be arrested, that then implicates other issues going into the court system with a local ordinance. The prosecutor doesn't prosecute those. So it would.
Thanks, and then we give some belief, and, yeah, and appreciate our police force and their efforts, too, that they know, he did, Mr. Cornato said they've been quite responsive in trying to help them when they can.
That's right. So keep me posted, please, thank you.
All right, if there's no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment, and I promised Susan Nino that I'd get up here first, because she's got a rec meeting to go to here real soon.
I do. Tammy, can we turn this thing on?
Sure. Maybe that's good enough. Hi, Sue D'Anno, 5125 Trade Winds, Vero Beach. I know you guys have budget sessions up in front of you, and I want to plant a seed before you get started, and that is that Nanette Haynes needs more money, and now I'm going to tell you why.
Say that again, Sue, I missed.
I said you've got budget sessions coming up in front of you, pretty soon? Yep. And Nanette Haynes needs more money, and I'm going to tell you why.
I understand, thank you.
Sunday was the last Art in the Park for the season, and I was sitting at the base of this tree, you see that chair in the upper portion there? My friend Rita was sitting there, and I was sitting on this side of that tree. And at some point, I decided I needed to be just a couple feet farther south to be more appropriately in front of my work, so I moved my chair over, and about 20 minutes later, there was a crash. And that thing, I don't know, it fell out of the palm tree. It's, it, people came running, it was so loud, it was heavy, it was absolutely full of carpenter ants. There were six of us, stomping on ants. It was, if I had still been sitting there, I'd had a really bad day. And I've got a pretty hard head, but let's pretend it was a toddler, standing there next to the tree, waiting on daddy to get his toys, her toys out of the trunk. This would be a really bad day for that family and for the city of Vero Beach. So I called Rob on Monday, I told him about this, and I told him I thought Nanette needed to go over and take a look at the trees. And I said, you know, I was talking to my husband yesterday about the city's tree trimming policy, and I think it's this, I think that we wait on a big wind, and then you just go along and you pick up all those palm fronds and whatever falls out of the trees. But I don't think we actually do palm tree pruning. It certainly doesn't look like it, if you drive around town, and 14th Ave, they are constantly falling onto the sidewalk. So I think, you know, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen, and it could easily be prevented by just giving Nanette a little more money and asking her to take a look at the trees. And she has been advised of this, Rob did, you know, talk to her yesterday, but she needs some financial help, and I pray you'll give it to her. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members. 2315 18th Avenue. Good afternoon, Jim. First, I want to thank Mr. Winger, because my question was also about the go line buses in the neighborhood being informed, and I understand that it is just going to be temporary, and thank goodness for that.
Yeah, I have to get it out of there.
I didn't plan on this, but at lunchtime, I did go home and downloaded some pictures about a subject that I spoke to Jim about, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. And I believe if I show these pictures, talking, and you seeing what I'm trying to explain, will kind of bring it to light. So if I could just put these pictures up on board, thank you. All right, this net, what I want to talk about, I talked to Jim about several weeks ago, about the amount of anglers, fishermen, that are on South Beach. And I'm hoping, some of the pictures, yeah, this one here, I tried to get up close to where the guard shack is and the proximity of the volleyball net. This is just showing one fisherman, but if you look at his tracks up to where he's sitting, he had just come back from talking to a couple of more anglers that were down there. I realized during season, we have, just by looking in the parking lot at South Beach, there's Louisiana, Texas, Mississippi, New Jersey, Ohio. We're talking about men who like to fish, and it's understandable that they would come here. This area, South Beach, is where all of our tourists come, where our children are playing. And this next picture will show the disconcern of the people in this picture for the child that's running right next to where they're fishing. You can see that child is right there in the fishing bucket with, all the hooks are right there, and those people are not even paying attention to the child. The father was running after him, trying to make sure he didn't go anywhere near where those fishing lines were. I spoke to Mr. Howell last night and told him that I would be late at the meeting to take a picture of a sign that I was sure in my head was there, down at South Beach.
That's the no fishing within X amount of feet from the guardhouse?
The second, no swimming when red flag is flying, no fishing. When I did that this morning, that was taken at 10:15 this morning, before I came to the meeting, so I took my sandals off and went down to the beach again. This is, I could only get 14 of the anglers in. This is north of the guardhouse, right on the beach, but I counted actually 19 fishermen there. This one's south. You can only see six of those poles, I put little black dots up there, but there were actually 13. So this morning alone, there were 32 fishermen, right around the guard shack.
Jim, was there some kind of tournament I'm unaware of that was going on down there?
No, sir, after she did call me, I did go down there and also talk to some folks. There is an awful lot of fishing going on down there. I just personally did not think going down there and running all the fishermen off of South Beach, because she's right, I mean, it's, most of them are coming out of the condos. Some of it is south of our beach, it's not really within the city beach, but a lot of it is, I mean, it's just, and fishing on the beaches, I mean, you can go up to JC Park, you will find it there, you can go up to the county park, you will find fishermen up there. I mean, it's, it's sort of been a standard here, but for sure, we can come down on the fishermen, and that's.
Two days prior to speaking to Mr. O'Connor, three days a week, I do walk the beach, and I normally go out there 8:30 in the morning, and my basic walk is south, and I usually, I walk a long distance. By the time I get back, I've walked 6.2 miles. So two days prior to talking to Jim, I had gone out, and coming back, my husband and I counted, just on the south side where this picture is, 37 poles that we had to either go round or under. And we're talking, at that time, it was right before Easter, our season was there, and we also had spring break, there were tons of people on the beach, dodging these fishing poles. But a few days after I talked to Jim, the Saturday before Easter, walking, the left pole right there is right where the volleyball net is, 15 yards from there, as I'm walking down toward the dune, I picked this up, out of the sand. There you have two hooks on the very end of this, and I'm going to pass this as Tammy can have this for her little records. can have this for her little records. Now imagine that child running up on the dune and getting those hooks in his little I have concern for that, real concern, because these fishermen are more interested in what they're pulling in than what they're leaving behind, and it's obvious. That would hurt me, that would really hurt me. But, one other subject is, if you remember in December, we had a wonderfully warm December, and one day in particular, my husband and I had walked north toward Wildos and coming back, I'd say about 75 yards from the guard shack, we watched as an angler pulled in a shark with fishermen, I'm sorry, swimmers, just to the south of him. And in February, walking south, we witnessed the same thing, another fisherman pulling in another shark. We're in warm waters, and we have our peak of swimmers, and 40 fishermen on one side, and God knows how many were to the north, and in the middle are all these people swimming and kids having a good time. Twice, we heard the horn blow, meaning come in. You don't know if they're looking at sharks and telling them to come in, or if the riptide is bad, but I know, I don't feel comfortable seeing all this, and I don't know what can be done, but there's a huge problem, because now we have people who are getting the word out that we have a great fishing area right on our shores, right on our beach, and we need to do something about that. I'm really concerned about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Jim, why can't they fish going south, down towards Castaway, or north, going in front of the golf course?
As long as they're fishing in front of the private properties, we have no regulations on that, but we can start enforcing fishing in the city parks.
Well, you know, in front of the private properties, at the waterline, the people don't own the beach.
Right, the city doesn't own the beach, and the people don't own it, but, but they do have the right beyond that high water mark to fish, because that's not under the jurisdiction, that's...
Except at our publicly, our public guarded beaches.
Yeah, public guarded beaches.
Guarded or not.
Well, that's correct, at public beaches, we can come down and say, there is no fishing.
Mm-hmm. I don't think there's...
How much of the time is a guard, a lifeguard there?
He's there about seven hours out of the day, or something like that. He, he's not there at 8 o'clock in the morning, some of these people go out when the sun up. I mean, they're, they're, they're very early.
And the poppin' are running.
That's right, yeah, that's right. And it's not like they fish all day, they're probably not out there at noon, but, but they're there in the morning, and they're there in the evening.
The lifeguards could push them away from the swimmers, right? North or south?
Well, they're actually away from, I, I think, as, as she said, they're away from the swimmers, swimmers are in the middle, and they're primarily on the south end, that's where most of the fishermen are when we were, the couple of times I've been down there. So they are, the swimmers are here, I think what we're being told is that they're leaving debris behind, and that kids are running down in that direction, I mean, you can't control, but they're not really fishing right there where the swimmers are, they're...
Do we have a sign there that says fishing north of this, or south of this, or something like that, or, you know, I don't know.
I, I think either we have fishing, or we don't have fishing, because it's, they're pretty separate. Now, we could put a sign up there, I guess, and say, you know, because we have signs right now, no umbrellas at this point, and move south.
I think you're not going, you're not going to stop fishing.
No, it's your God-given right to fish down on the beach if you want to, except within the swimming areas. That's right.
But, but they, they weren't really fishing where the people are sitting, where they're swimming. They're south, they're primarily south of there.
But, if you look at the one picture that I took on the second, it does show, that's why I tried to get the closeness of it to where the guard shack and the volleyball net was, and that's very close, they weren't that far off, I mean, they were within, I would say, from the volleyball net about 20 yards, that's it. And I'm thinking, that's still part of the area that is city-controlled and fishermen can be there.
That's too close.
It's, it's very close, Jim, to where the volleyball net is, where a lot of our tournaments are held, and that hook was found not, because that's where I parked my blanket, and that's where I park my chair all the time, is right beyond the volleyball net, and that's where I found that.
And that's where the fishermen come up, because they have to go out, that access.
Right.
So they're, they're bringing all their equipment up and going out.
But, the photo you showed us of the 19, you showed 14, there were 19 total, that way?
That was this morning.
Wasn't that right in front of the, the...
That, that was, that was just beyond the guardhouse. That, they were a little further, I would say they were about 50 yards from the guard shack, but still, I believe, within close enough proximity, if they were to go down further, let them bring all their stuff down further. I know it's a longer walk, but we have a duty to our tourist, and to find all that debris, and not even be responsible, not even care that it's down there, that's why I said, that child could have ran upon that, that hook was right on the dune line, right as you were going to go down to walk on the beach area, it was right there.
And that's just, that's an irresponsible person, that, just like people littering, you know?
You can't legislate, yeah.
No, you can't legislate that, but I'm, I'm just fearful that now, this year was the biggest, biggest amount of men I've ever seen fishing, ever on our beach, and I walk it all the time. I'm very familiar with it, this was the largest amount, we've had our largest amount of tourists this year, I don't think we're going to slow down, I think it's going to get even more. So if the word gets out, and there is no control about how far from this area of swimmers and family playing, what, how are we going to control it if we don't start to do it now? Next season, I know is going to be bigger, I just know in my heart, and I'm happy for it, but we need to control that, we really need to think about our tourists and their safety.
Jim, let's, let's just be sure that, within the swimming area, that no fishing is enforced, I think that's really all we could do.
We, we can do that, that's not a problem, and the lifeguards, I think, have input into that, again, the fishermen are not there, they're primarily to the south, but there are a lot, I mean, there's no question, but we, we will take a look at it and see what we can do, and see if I can get some recommendations from Rob and his guys, if a sign can be placed, and we can force the fishermen south, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Just, just so you know, we apparently, I've looked, and Peggy just emailed, she was looking too, we really don't have an ordinance that says you can't fish at public beaches.
I think we did a shark fishing one.
No, it's chumming and blood baiting is the only thing we have. However, we have a general section that talks about park rules that can be adopted by resolution, so I'm asking Tammy, maybe she can dig it up and see where that rule about no fishing was initially adopted, perhaps we need to put it in the code so the officers know what to write up.
What about dogs? Have we got dogs in there?
I think, yes, there's a section in the, in the parks about no dogs in parks, and the beaches are part of the parks, right.
But remember, that doesn't apply to, to say, in front of Costa, or in front of the Holiday Inn.
Right, right. And there's no way to regulate the east coast of Florida.
We haven't tried that yet. But I will tell you, a shark on the shore is much better than the shark in the water if I'm swimming.
That's a good point. Mr. Hedy.
Hello, Council.
Hi.
Mr. Howell.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
I think, sir, that you're probably right, outside of the, outside of the city parks, there's little we can do. Several years ago, I was running for city council, that may come as a surprise to some of you, anyway, at a public forum, the question, remember the shark, yeah?
German terrors.
And that particular year, at one of the public candidate forums, there was a question about the, the sharks and, and the fishing, and clearly, the group in the audience were going to vote for someone who was opposed to the shark fishing. And as candidates, we all got asked a question about how we felt about the shark fishing. And I'll repeat my answer for this council now, it hasn't changed any, and, but it wasn't the sharks in the ocean that really were of concern to me, it was the sharks inside City Hall, and we had a few of them here today that sat for a lot of hours and collected a lot of our dollars. And those sharks are more damaging to the public than, than the sharks in the ocean, and when we're out swimming, we're in their home, so, anyway, but I would agree that in a, in a city park where it's, where there's, there's lifeguards, there shouldn't be, and, and Linda, you're certainly right, that, that whatever we have to do to enforce the rules that we have in city beaches that are protected, that needs to be done. Mr. Winger?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think you've done this since your first meeting, and the constant interruptions, oh, and, and thank you, Mr. Howell, for stepping in, I appreciate it, I don't know whether Charlie Wilson did or not, but I certainly appreciated the, the instruction to the other council member that you can't be doing that, you know, I mean, Mr. Wilson has what Mr. Wilson has to say, and you can have an opinion one way or the other, whether he's right, wrong, or indifferent, but the constant interruptions by certain council members, when they don't like what a member of the public is saying, is outrageous, it's uncalled for, it's not what you're supposed to be doing, it's not what you're elected to do, you're elected to represent us, you can't represent us if you're not listening to us, and I have found in my many years on this planet, that it's very difficult to listen to what someone's saying to you when you are simultaneously talking back at them, that if you want to hear what they're saying, you need to open your ears and close your mouth, and, anyway. The public comment portion of the meeting has been moved to the very end, and I still remember Councilmember Turner's comments at the time that this was voted on, and she, she, you were the only one that had the correct vote. Everyone else voted in favor of moving the public to the end of the meeting, and it seems to me that you have it a little backwards. And then in, in today's agenda, the agenda, I think, is in a 12 font, I'm not an expert at this, Tammy could tell you, but I think it's something like a 12 font, and then the back page, and that's reduced down to about an 8 font, because you can't get all of this on a page, this is our instructions, this is the public's instructions on, and this is obviously new, I don't remember the council voting on adding all of these rules and regulations to the public, but it seems to me that if you want to represent the public, the thing that you need to do is you need to sit there politely, listen, if you have questions, nothing wrong with asking a speaker questions, but the constant interruptions, and as far as the electric is concerned, I was on the council back in 2009, when we asked for interested parties to come and give us an offer on what the electric utility would be worth to them, and from the time I made, the time I voted yes in favor of that motion, it went from there downhill, and it hasn't ceased going downhill. In a January meeting, Mr. Howell, I asked you some questions, and the mayor jumped to your defense and said that you don't have to answer the questions, and you shouldn't know the answers to these questions, because you've only been on the council for a month, two months at that, at that point, and the interesting thing to me was that I was asking legitimate questions about the sale of the electric utility, and if there were answers to the questions, then the other council members were here a lot longer than you, so, okay, you didn't know the answers, I understand, but there were other council members, and none of them jumped in to give any answers to the questions, and if you want to go back and look at the January meeting, the questions still stand, and they're still not answered. And thank you, Pilar, for continuing to do something to try to relieve the burden on the average person in this community. Thank you for your efforts to try to help the retirees in this community, and you've done it for a lot of years, and I know what kind of a brick wall that you, you face, and, and it really is a shame, and we should have a long time ago, I said, turn over the keys, your answer was, you haven't seen the keys, you know? The keys, basically, it's, it's a computer function, you know, you can start tomorrow morning, you know, tomorrow morning with, with FPNL, right, have the computer, all, all bills that go out, starting tomorrow, and I know you, it's not going to happen tomorrow, starting the first of the month, we'll be billed at FPNL rates, the checks will go to FPNL, you can have the accountants, you've got a pretty good accounting office upstairs, you can figure out who owes what, let them take over, let them take over, it's not a hard thing to do. It's not being done because the majority, as Charlie Wilson pointed out, the majority of the council doesn't want it done, and hasn't wanted it done since 2009, and we continually get told that, oh, we're going to do this, and, and here's an answer for this, and what happens is, the public gets a higher bill the next month, just keeps up, it's disgusting. And this is representative government, and, and, you know, I, I might be the only one here at this moment talking about it, but it's 3:30 in the afternoon, I got here at 9:30, and there's not a whole lot of people in this community that have the time, certainly not the working-class people in this community, that have the time to come and sit hour after hour after hour, to wait for the opportunity to speak, and somebody ought to make a motion at every single meeting from this day forward, to move the public comment back to where it belongs at the beginning, and I don't know how you run for a higher office for a county commissioner, I don't know how you do that when you can't even handle the public at the smaller municipality, you don't want to listen to them. If you don't want to listen to them, why would we put you in a higher office? I don't get that at all.
Is that a question?
Sure, you want to answer it? Absolutely.
No, we, we are simply doing the same thing that the people are doing, that the higher office are doing, they move their public comment at the end as well, but unfortunately, they don't get any grief about doing that.
Well, because I haven't gone to their meetings, maybe I should start.
Well, that's, that's your decision, but...
But, the public, you, you're here to serve the public.
That's correct. My door is always open, Brian.
And you can't, you can't represent us if you don't listen to us, and the public, the public can't wait till 3:30 in the afternoon on a workday to sit and tell you what they have to say, and, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, there were several things that happened, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, there were eight things that happened at the very beginning of the meeting, where no public comment was requested, asked for, no one was invited to speak, and had there been public comment at the very beginning of the meeting, maybe I might have had a comment on a couple of these things. But I wasn't given the opportunity.
Well, a lot of those things didn't have action, a lot of those things did not have action, they were just presentations.
Well, if somebody gives a presentation and it's not correct, it goes out on the television, they tell people things, and, and then people believe it as being factual, I mean, that answer is nonsense.
Well, we have to deal with that all the time. Is there anybody else for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, I know it's been a long day, and thank you for spending your time here, I know it's a lot of work. Ken Dag, 18... Ken Dag, 1846 21st Avenue. I have a question. I don't expect it to be answered now, maybe later on. And I can send it to you in writing. But I got a number of phone calls when it was mentioned from the DAIS a little while ago, that there was a billing true-up from the Orlando Utility Authority that came back to the city. I think it was mentioned here, it was around a million and a quarter. And I was wondering at a later date if you can let us know if that's going to go back to the ratepayers with a little reduction in their bill. I don't expect an answer now, but if you could answer that in the near future, appreciate it. Thanks.
My understanding, that'll probably be built into the next rate case, which is starting here.
That is very true. Any revenues or expenditures are part of the rates that we set. And so, any reduction in the rates will be placed into the rates going forward.
When is that next going to be done? Just curious.
Well, we are hoping sometime in the May or June timeframe that we're searching for. And it'll go to the Utility and Finance Commission first before it comes back to you.
That's fine. Let me ask you another question. The return of capital from the diesel plant belongs to the electric, I think, but it doesn't seem, it seems like that's a little bit of a special category. I don't know. Maybe it's not.
Well, we've been charging them for the cost.
Well, I mean, will it reduce rates or be used for some other purpose?
It'll be a revenue, so it'd be reducing rates. Not specifically that $1 that goes in, but it goes into the revenues that are generated by the electric department.
Do we know what kind of a reduction a million dollars would have on?
It's 1%.
1%.
Approximately.
And it was a million six, and, you know...
Now, that's one bill, and there was a true-up in there, so...
I understand that. But for Mr. Howell, the experience has been, I've tracked it, and it's been relatively favorable since the OUC thing was signed. In other words, we're historically doing better. And part of that, of course, is natural gas has been below $2 and so on, and we benefit from that. So, I mean, it looks pretty good, really.
Thank you.
All right. We're still under public comment. If anybody would like to say anything. If not, I'll go ahead and move on to council's matters. We have no old business, new business. Mr. Old has requested to speak on review of evaluations.
Yeah. In your package is something to, I'd like you to look at. And that's basically what I've done, is I've looked at what our, there are three people that report to us, clerk, general manager, and attorney. And it's up to us to appraise them manually. And it's up to us also to make sure their job description is correct and their goals are correct for the year. And so, what I've done is I've taken a number of other cities, looked at theirs, and come up with something that I've done. And it's only my opinion. And so, I'd ask that you look at them and get back to me with any changes you have. And then what I'll do is I'll summarize all those changes, and we'll talk about it. If there are a lot of changes, then we may have to spend quite a bit of time doing it. If there are not a lot of changes, then maybe we can do it in a regular meeting. What I've also done is I've suggested a method or a process of doing this whereby in the spring, we go through an appraisal process of each one of the three people. And you can either do it on a piece of paper that I've suggested, or you can sit down with each one of the people and appraise them one-on-one. That is, sit down and talk to them about what they're doing and how they did in terms of meeting their goals and in terms of their performance as you see it. And then we'd summarize those, and it would be a record with Tammy. So, there's basically a calendar of what to be done, what needs to be done, and job description, and the appraisal form, and the goals. And what I'm saying is it's my work. It's not necessarily what you would do, and I'd like to have feedback from you.
Yeah. And just as a note, make sure the feedback just goes to Tammy.
Okay, fine.
Because you can't communicate back and forth with each other.
I'm sorry. I misspoke.
I just had a question then. Ms. Vok, would you please provide us with a paper copy of those documents?
Yeah, a suggestion.
Because what do we have on the iPads? And that way, we can take them to work on it.
Suggestion, Ms. Turner. I did my mine, which are, again, only suggestions. That's all. And I made a lot of them. Relatively few to Mrs. Vok, but relatively few to the other two. I mean, relatively a great number. And there are word documents, and maybe the easiest way is to get the word document and, you know, edit your opinion on those, and then they all be put together, and then we work our way through. You know, I see it as taking...
It'll take some time.
It's going to take, it's going to take some time for all of you to make your comments. And then it's going to probably take two or three hours of sitting down and saying, what should it really say? But, you know, I mean, we have a lot of things to deal with in the future. The three pieces of property at the river. The city clerk has made really good progress in improving our access of our television station, things of that nature. And so, anyway, I think it's a really good project. I think we should commit before the budget season to really accomplish this.
That's what I'm hoping to do. And let me just see what the feedback is, and then I'll put it together. And then maybe we have a separate meeting where we just sit down and just do this. We'll see. That's all I've got.
If you put that up. If you'll hand these, these out.
Are you on your next, on the next item?
Yeah. Whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
It's fine. You know, the first time I ever came, my family bought a house here in 1971. To that blessed event, I owe my having a home because, as a lot of you know, my family's moved all over this country for a long time, hundreds of years, as a matter of fact. And I've lived 14 places, my wife also. And I think Vero Beach is what I would call a special place, a special place. And I think we're all dedicated to that. I know Mr. Dag looking out in the audiences, and Mrs. Hillman, and so on. You know, the funny thing about Vero Beach is my family bought a house here in 1971, but the first thing I ever saw was the Marina in 1974. I had three sons. My second boy was 10, and he ran the boat from New Jersey, pretty much. He liked running boats all the way down here by himself at 10. And the first thing I ever saw was the Marina. And I wish I'd taken a picture of the Marina. It has changed a little bit, but it's changed deplorably little. We recently got, you know, accosted in 32963. And I don't think it's Tim's fault. I think it's city council's fault. But we got accosted for it being a second-class facility. And, you know, I mean, in the last two or three years, we've had to deal with Leisure Square being in poor shape, not having new police cars. We have not dealt with the OEB pension situation, which we've got to do. You know, we have had frayed awnings. A year and a half ago, Mr. Dag spent a long time about not mowing grass on the mainland. It has just, you know, what we have is allowed to happen across the city. And we faced part of it last year, and we're going to have to face more of it next year. But what we have is a lot of deferred maintenance and deferred looking at what our responsibility really is. I mean, have police ride around in cars that are 10, well, whatever number of years they are, they're, we're quite old. It's just not really responsible. I have a proposal, but I don't know that it's the right proposal. But if you look at what's up on the transparency, I guess I'd go down to the circled part down below. Last year, we spent $14,908 on capital on this. And this year, we have $30,000 budgeted. And if you look at the bottom portion of this thing, if the revenue is $1,584, $1,250,000 of it is consumed by salary, the biggest single item is fuel resale. We have, have to pay $335,000 every year. It's paid October 1st and April 1st. It's paid for this year. That's, I guess, a good thing. And then we transfer $105,000 or $100,000, depending upon the particular year, out of this facility. And so, if you look at it and you wonder why it's, and Tim, don't take this wrong, but I buy my gas there, I go there, whatever. You go into the building where the washing machines are, as a friend of mine said, you know, we replace urinals if they fall off the wall. And, you know, I think we've got to face it. My proposal right here, one thing you could do, I mean, you could do away with a transfer. I kind of don't like that one. But if you look at this piece of property, you know, the debt is caused when we acquired the southern portion of it. And I handed you the sheet that deals with the CAFER and tells you what the debt is. But, you know, if you look at that property, you've got the metal building and a dock, and then most of the property is actually an office that used to be, sell boats, because I lived on Conway a few blocks away, and my family did it for many years. And we rent the thing. And I just think the whole thing is illogical. I mean, you know, should we have paid what we paid for it? I don't know. Should we have paid what we paid for the golf carts? Hell, no. But be that as it may, you know, one thing that we could do would be to take the debt from this particular facility, which is backed by its revenues, but really, it's backed by our ad valorem taxes. That's what the covenant says. And we could just move it to the general fund. And the consequence of that would be, we could, that we'd have money to reinvest in this facility. I mean, you know, I said a couple of years ago, if you look at Leisure Square, and we're repairing and putting a new roof on and doing a lot of things to it, you know, which is good. Personally, I would have torn the thing down and started over again. Because I, you know, you get to the end life of an asset, but that building there is at the end of life of its asset. I don't know what we're thinking. The dock needs work. I mean, you know, we hammer a few nails in when something falls off. So, I open it for discussion, but I, you know, Vero Beach is really a special place. And if some of the people that come here, you know, come in yachts, and that's their first view of the city, I mean, you, do you really want to have a place that's not a special place? And, you know, we, sitting here, are responsible for it because we've started for capital. Gee, we're going to give it $30,000 next year. Maybe we'll put two urinals on the wall next year instead of this. I hate to be facetious. So, I think it needs to be addressed. It would have no consequence right today to move the debt to the general fund because the debt is paid through October 1st. Next year, we would have to deal with it. And I suppose you can say, well, how are we going to deal with it there? Well, I know that's a problem, but that doesn't change the responsibility. We're going to have to deal one way or another. I mean, either we're going to have to raise the prices a whole lot, or we're going to have to invest in it. We just simply can't keep going this way year after year. So, those are my comments. I'll open it for others.
I have the same feeling in some respects. After the article came out, I went over and looked around. And I, and I think some of the articles, the articles' claims were not correct or were an exaggeration. But on the same side, I think that we've, it's, we've neglected it because we've been focusing on other things. And I think it is our fault. I'm not convinced that moving the debt's the main thing. I'd just like to see the ramifications going forward on what that would do, what we would do, not this next year, obviously, because if we don't have a debt payment to be made, then it's not going to affect that year. But the year after that, we're going to have to cut, unless we've raised taxes, we're going to have to cut something. And what would we cut? There seems to be many more demands now than we have money. And I'm just curious about what it would do. And so, we'd have to look at how to do this best. And I'm not convinced it's moving the debt, but that is definitely a solution. And maybe the debt doesn't belong there. But the idea of what to do is, how to do it, where to get the money is the issue, no question.
You know, a couple more comments. I mean, I don't know whether we could partition the property and leave the metal building as, you know, a part of the Marina. And the rest of it really has nothing to do with the Marina. It has more to do with the other property around it. Another thing we could do, and we could ask the Marina manager and the city, or the city manager to ask the Marina manager to do, I forget sometimes, management's through Jim. He's responsible for everything. But, you know, we could ask for between now and budget time, because really, nothing's going to happen. The next payment of 100 and whatever it is, 40,000, no, 172,000, isn't going to be made until October 1st. It's going to be made next year. We could ask for a plan of, over the next three years, five years, whatever, what would it take in the way of specific action and funding to do something about this? I mean, I don't see any difference than the police cars. I mean, we had to start buying 16 police cars or whatever the number is. So, maybe that's the right solution, to have the city manager...
Well, you know, in some ways, we've hit on priorities. I mean, what's happened and what's taken our bandwidth has been the utility, because that's a huge thing that's been facing us. And then it's come back around to police cars and roads and stuff like that. And this has, this has kind of looked at like a luxury, and it's not something that is, that is really hurting a huge number of residents. So, this has gotten a low priority, and that's kind of understandable. But on the same side, it's a valuable asset, and we ought to be treating it correctly. So, it's coming up with a solution of now, what are we going to do? If we did take the debt away, is the annual debt payment, what, 300, was it, something like that?
About 335.
335 minus the lease, the rental payments are 250, something like that?
What are the rental payments?
The rental payments on that building are about $53,000.
53.
53. So, let's say it's, let's say it's 300 that it would spring up. I'm not so sure we need to spend 300 a year on this. I just, I really don't know how much we need. And so, we ought to come up with what expenses we need to be spending or what capital improvements we need to be making, and then come up with a solution to it. Is it moving the debt? Maybe that's a good idea. Moving part of the debt? Is that, I mean, or assuming part of the debt on the general front? I don't know. But it's, it's something we've got to deal with. There's no doubt.
Right. Ms. Turner?
Yes. I mean, surely, we would like to see our assets well taken care of. And the article was certainly an embarrassment. I would like to note that not all the issues that were brought up were many issues. I mean, when we have decaying materials, we've got rusted bicycles and debris around the area, that, to me, is a maintenance issue, and it's not a capital improvement. I'd like to, you know, Ms. Larson, to address this about moving debt out of an enterprise fund. I mean, this debt is for the land that's part of the Marina. I mean, you're playing accounting games here. It should stay with this, debt is associated with that asset, and should stay with that enterprise fund. In the event, we do need to, you know, I don't disagree that we may need to move some more, to have some more capital money for the Marina, but I think it can be accomplished by reducing the transfer or by possible just making a contribution from the general fund. But relocating this debt, I think, is contrary to good accounting practices, and I would object.
I don't have any objection to what you say. I guess what I'd like is a consensus that when we get to budget time, the city manager will come forward with a plan of some duration, some number of years, to address this asset. That's really all I'm after.
It's a good idea.
And I think this, this kind of five-year look at each one of our enterprises and make sure that they've, that they're, they're taking care of themselves is really important. I think the airport is required to do it by the FAA. We've done, now we're looking very much so at the, at the electric. We ought to have the same thing with the sewer and water, and we ought to have the same thing with this. So, we're looking at what we'd like to be able to do, and then we pick and choose between what we, what we'd like to do and what we can do.
Well, I definitely do agree it needs to be addressed, and having it addressed at budget time would be good. So, I don't think you've got to...
We'll take the lead from the council and try to address and come out with some capital projects next year, and then we'll debate how we fund those projects.
Now, I just have one question. I know we've got about $200,000 that's going to get into five-year capital plan for the Marina. Is that, is that this year or is that next year? Go ahead. Cindy?
I guess just a couple of things, maybe, to throw in to the numbers. First of all, as far as, as moving the debt, you know, the pledge on that debt is actually the Marina revenues, if they are sufficient, and non-ad valorem, not ad valorem, but non-ad valorem revenues, besides. So certainly, that's, that's really a matter of your discretion as to whether you think that that property really is more, belongs with the Marina or not. And as we, as the city manager said, if we were to move the debt, we would also move the revenue generated by that property to the corresponding fund. So that's really, you know, it's not, some of our, some of our electric debt, for instance, is absolutely a pledge of the net revenues of the electric utility. This is not the case with this particular debt. And just a little piece of history, the reason this wasn't a problem for several years is when we first bought that building, we had a fine grant that paid our debt service for three years. And as soon as that went away, and we began actually having this conversation with the Marine Commission, as soon as that fine grant that paid the debt service every year went away, immediately, there was an additional $335,000 a year burden on the Marina. If you look at the CAFER from a cash perspective, essentially, after the very small expenditures on capital that Tim was able to make last year, there was only a $4,000 increase in the cash position. And there's actually a deficit net asset position of about $260,000. So certainly, there's a burden on the Marina that goes on for a very long time, that's very, very large, and is something that you, as a council, have the ability to address in, in a number of different ways. And then as far as the 200 and some thousand, I think at this point, he's only put maybe 30 a year or so into his budget going forward for his five-year CIP. The big number was out there a few years, Tim, and I think it had to do with a major replacement of some docks for about 150. But if you look at the five-year CIP, the idea was that would be offset substantially by a grant. So it's not really money that's, that's coming from him. It would be a huge amount of grant funding to go with it. So, yeah, his depreciation expenditures annually, which are usually a pretty good measure of how much you're using up your assets every year, run at about $60,000. So certainly, even just to keep, just to break even, to keep pace with the amortization of your capital assets at $60,000 a year, you'd need $60,000 a year in expenditures, and you don't have that cash right now. You're generating about, about an extra four or five.
I have a question. Just, just a question. So I don't want anybody to say Harry's for or against something, but if, this almost seems like more of a liability than a gain for the city, and even moving forward, so...
Harry, just for, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
It's a $100,000 asset annually to the city.
It is.
It is not a negative. What's negative is the printed press.
Okay.
This does make a return on equity, or a contribution, or however you wanna call it, to the general fund of over $100,000 per year, 6% of revenue, and, you know, is still able to actually pay the debt service. The real issue, I think, as being pointed out, is that it does all those things with nothing left over to reinvest. And so it's using up its assets, and it doesn't have the cash flow to actually put the money back into the capital.
That's right. So if we have to spend, and I'm just throwing a number out, if we have to spend $300,000 to recoup the place, then we've wiped out three years of gains to the general fund. I don't know what it would take, I'm just...
Depends on the speed at which you wanna try to bring it back up to snuff, and what those capital projects are. It really, it really, really does. But again, you know, the central debate is, that property and the very large debt service that we took on, is that really, was that really beneficial to the Marina? I mean, is that something that really is a Marina asset, or was it just because it was in conjunction with the Marina, it was, it was sort of added to the Marina burden?
I also think the Marina has a lot of potential that it's not achieved. And it's not, and I, I think that, that there's more demand than we're, than we're attracting. I think that it, it's a great location, and I think there's a lot of people that would use it that we're not attracting right now, just, we haven't got the space.
Well, yes and no. I mean, I would say, just looking at it, you know, at this point, I don't know how that Tim and his staff could, with the resources they have available to them, generate any more revenue than they are.
Yeah, I completely agree.
Okay, impact, the amount of gas they pump, et cetera. But, you know, remembering also that there were some substantial staff cuts over there, again, with Tim's attempt to make his bottom line balance. When the fine grant went away, and when the debt service burden came onto them in full...
When the economy dropped.
He made an attempt to balance his budgets, exactly, by doing away with staffing. And, you know, at this point, I don't know how they could, how they could generate more with what they have than they are right now, and yet that still leaves them in a position where there's really not much left over at the end of each year for capital investments.
I'm thinking out five years or 10 years, or something like that. I think that it could be bigger and more revenue generating, that's all, not immediately.
Yeah, but not perhaps without some additional investment.
Yes, I think so.
That's really the question mark, so...
You know, this is completely a tangent. I agree to everything Cindy says, so, and everything everybody else has said. Interesting thing is, there was a plan, I've forgotten how many years ago, actually, to make a boardwalk and put more docks and all sorts of things there, and, you know, it's been, it's obviously shelved and so on. I just mentioned it as a tangent, that's all.
But certainly, I would echo what the city manager said. Knowing that we have this concern, and knowing that it needs a solution, let us, let us talk about it during budget season, let us bring you some opportunities to think about ways to split the debt service, or move the debt service, et cetera, and what those ramifications might be in other funds, and then see how we can handle it going forward.
Yeah, maybe we can have two weeks for budget work.
As I recall, I've whittled it down, year after year, to three days, because we didn't think it should take that long. So certainly, we're here, we're here all week that week, so whatever you'd like to do.
Thanks. Thank you, Cindy. Mr. Corey?
I'll be very quick. Is this really an enterprise fund? I think that's...
The mic, please. Use the mic.
I said, is this really an enterprise fund?
Yes, sir, it is.
If it can't sustain itself...
It's sustaining itself.
It is sustaining itself.
It is not if you can't invest in it and have it carry its own weight in capital improvements. That, look, look at the cemetery, look at what happened in recreation. I know, my only, just throwing it out, is it really an enterprise fund if it can't sustain capital investment that will pay, and in fact, is, as you said, is running at negative in some of its, what replenishment would have to be, if you'd have to go out and borrow more money? That's all. I mean, just as a concept.
I do wanna clear up one thing, because I hear this a lot. The cemetery is not an enterprise, and never has been. The cemetery is a permanent fund, a completely different situation.
Very permanent.
Yes, very permanent, and luckily for those people who are currently there.
Ask the investors.
And it's not, it's not an enterprise fund, and has never been expected to, to carry itself as an enterprise fund. You know, the situation with the recreation fund, which I completely agreed with you in what you see in your current CAFER, is now gone as an enterprise fund, again, was completely different, with a deficit of over $1,500,000 a year, in addition to the fact that its capital improvements were not paid for. So, you know, we're talking here about, again, if you wanna use as your benchmark about $60,000 a year reinvestment in your Marina is what's needed to keep pace with your depreciation, which is a great measure of how fast you're using up your assets. We're talking about being out of whack by $50,000, $55,000 or so annually to break even. So, I mean, I would submit to you, it's a completely different situation than you had with recreation, and once again, the cemetery's not an enterprise fund.
Yeah, but if you look at this, and I'm unsure how this implies in service, but if you look at the salaries and benefits, they went down 38, 28, $66,000, and there's, you know, what is there, two and a half people there, or three people there now? And what's that done to service? That's an interesting question. I don't know how Tim is even here, he should be there. So, I mean, you know, we ween down the people asset, the service aspect, or at least the cost of the service aspect, that's all.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna agree that the city manager's gonna do a little...
We'll bring back and put some emphasis on the Marina, I think, is what you've asked me to do.
Okay, all right. Ms. Turner, are that, you're okay? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and individual council matters. Did, did the Meals on Wheels, I think a lot of us have, it's a really good organization, it really opens your eyes as to what the elderly goes through in our, our society, and, you know, God bless them for, for what they do. They keep an eye on our, on our elderly, and they're the first ones to do, to see if there's anything wrong, what's going on with them. I attended the Christchurch groundbreaking there, where the Oslo Magnet School was. There's gonna be a new church there. Good group of people, it'll be a good welcome to the family of Vero Beach there. Did, did, you know, a really neat thing on Sunday, and that is, we had an event with five Eagle Scouts here in Indian River County. It was quite of an unusual that the, we had five of them at one time, but we've got a lot of great achievement of our youth in this county, and it's good to, good to celebrate that. Got a bunch of other things here, but in the interest of time, I'll go ahead and pass this off to, to Mr. Old.
One thing that I did, which I got a real kick out of, was I talked about our position as a city council member to seventh graders at the Storm Grove School for two periods. And I, it was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed it. There were maybe 40 students in one class, and maybe 25 in another class, or something like that. I got some good questions, and lots of interest, not lots of interest, but interest, and I think we gotta be doing it with more schools. I think that is something that should be going on, just to encourage voting, encourage knowledge of what happens, and, and what this position's all about, and how city government works. It was good, I was very pleased to be able to do that. Thank you.
Yes, I also delivered Meals on Wheels, and had the pleasure to deliver to our local celebrity, Florence Redstone's 104. She answered the door with her walker, and she's been able to remain independent in her home because of this great program of Meals on Wheels. Just like to ask people to think, think about this, or getting a friend and maybe sharing a route for one day a week to deliver meals. It's especially, they need help over the summer months, a lot of our snowbirds that volunteer leave, and it really taxes their staff to try to get all these meals out to people. So if you, and maybe like I said, you don't have to do it full-time commit, but if you get a friend, maybe, or two or three, you know, to do it once a month, to deliver a meal for an hour or two, be a great, great help. Want to remind everybody about Hibiscus Festival. We've got all kinds of exciting things going on on Saturday, April the 9th, starting out with the Hibiscus Ride. This is, they have several bike rides at all different levels. The festival, fun games, music, all start about 10 o'clock on Saturday and Sunday, and on Saturday, go to 8 o'clock in the evening, so great to get out and enjoy some of this gorgeous weather we've had. And on Friday, April the 15th, at historic Dodger Town and the United Way, we'll present the Third Annual Jackie Robinson Celebration, and it will be, I think it's the Brevard Manatees playing the, hang on, sorry, anyway...
The Mets, the Mets from St. Lucie.
And St. Lucie Mets. At 6:30 at Dodger Town, and with the proceeds going to, to our local United Way here. So go out, enjoy, enjoy an evening at historic Dodger Town. That's it.
Mr. Winger?
I'm ready to go outside, Mr. Old Mayor.
Mr. Howell?
I think you all said it all, and thank you. Tammy, if you could just help me and help the rest of us that maybe didn't catch it, on Friday, for the playground and the mural, could you recap that, please?
Yes, we are going to cut the ribbon for the new mural at Riverside at the Racquetball Club, and then we're gonna walk over to cut the ribbon for the new playground.
And what time is it?
At 5:30.
5:30, thank you. So I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second, third, and fourth it, so we are so moved.
Thank you.
You forgot to taste the Vero...